All right, I've got six, so I will read the virtual meeting notice and then you can go ahead and start the meeting, Rainy.
Okey doke.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, and March 23rd order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by go to zoom.us, enter, hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of the screen, type in the meeting ID, which is 842-7356-8207, and enter the password 087920. Hit "Join." Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note to join in video meeting with cellphone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store or by watching on Public Access TV Charter Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at select board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled select board meeting, it will be read at that select board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised select board meeting, it will be read at the next select board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectman@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public on the select board agenda.
Okay, thanks very much, Ed. So, welcome everybody to the Select Board Meeting Southampton, April 28th, 2020. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
So, for what everybody's minds and hearts is the effects of the COVID. I just want to again extend our deepest sympathy to the three families in town that have lost loved ones because of the virus and to everybody else that's dealing with this and their families. I just want to start by asking if there's anybody that has a need to change the order of the agenda. Everybody okay? Then we'll keep going. There's no appointments or resignations. There's no hearings. But we do have reports. Would someone like to start with the select board reports?
Okay, I'll start. The Hampshire Regional High School had a special meeting in conjunction with one of the other towns on April 15th, and the first portion of that meeting was devoted to some budget information, so I want to update you on that. The first item that was discussed was an adjustment to the capital budget. All capital requests on that budget, with the exception of the heating and cooling, have been removed. So, our share, the portion at Southampton, would have had to pay had the full budget remained intact. The capital budget would have been $178,549. With pulling back on the other capital items, it was reduced to $55,450. So, we're looking at about $123,000 savings there than what was originally requested. And then secondly, looking ahead, and I'm sure Bobby's on and Aaron is on, maybe they have an update, but there was a conversation about the possibility about renegotiating the bus contracts since they aren't transporting students. While the governor orders that, you know, all the bus driver salaries and employment needs to remain intact, there may be some other savings realized through the fact that the buses are not running the way they did and the maintenance and some savings there. So, the regional school committee authorized Bobby Jones to negotiate with Durham, the transportation company, and I don't have any information since that meeting what has transpired or even if she had a meeting since that time. But maybe at some point she can bring that up. So, just overall, between the operating and the capital budget for fiscal year '21 for the school year, we're looking at an increase for Southampton of $156,039, which I'm going to say is relatively modest compared to previous years. I think they did a great job putting this budget together. So, that's all I have on this. The Bylaw Committee, also which I'm a part of, has been kind of furloughed for the time being while all the other departments attend to other, obviously, important things. So, that's my report.
That's good news. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Francine before we move on?
The items that they took off Francine, where are they going next year or?
I don't have that information. I would imagine next year or preceding year because they had had like a 10-year capital plan, so they may have shifted some other things around. Yes.
Okay.
I'll get you. They're having their next meeting on Monday, and I'll be in attendance or Zoom meeting, and I'll ask that information. I'll give it to you next time.
Okay.
Go ahead, John.
I would say it seems like there's several people connected with Hampshire Regional on this call. Can we just ask them to turn on their mic?
Sure. So, this is Aaron. A number of those items were future items. So, one of the things they had elected to do in this year was to separate operating and capital, which is actually more typical of most regional districts is they have an operating budget and then a separate capital budget. Capital budget can be a little more erratic. You have those big one-time costs, and then you might have a couple of years without much, and you have another. I'm sure you all experienced it too. You have a big truck at the DPW you have to buy one year. That shoots things way up, then other years you may choose to finance it to spread it out. So, what they did is they said, "Let's look at some capital needs going forward that might come up in the next few years. Let's get them all in one fell swoop in this capital request, and then we'll have a smoother next few years and our operating budget will look more stable." Typically, operating budgets look a little more stable. You have your typical contractual increases, but no big capital items that come up. So, in light of the COVID issue, knowing that towns are kind of scrambling for things right now, the Regional Committee decided to pull off some of the future items. The boiler issue is more immediate and urgent, so they kept that one on.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? I know that the majority of the budget are contractual items, salaries, and also benefits and that sort of thing. Do you expect any kind of adjustment to your budget? I mean, I think there are, it seems like there'd be savings in terms of, you know, copying and food and, you know, a number of curricular items, but do you anticipate any changes in the budget?
Well, truth be told, while we have some, the current year, next year, we're anticipating the next year's budget to be what we put forth. We're expecting to have school. We're expecting to transport students. We're expecting to run everything. The reality is also that we are incurring costs in getting devices. We're actually feeding students now. So, that is a cost that we wouldn't have, that you might think we wouldn't have, but we do have. We are feeding students throughout the district. We are transporting meals to students. We are physically transporting curricular materials to students as well. Per the Commissioner and Governor's guidelines, we are continuing to pay hourly employees. So, we have some employees, for example, who are paid through some revolving funds that we receive revenue for, and we are continuing to pay them. So, as much as we're saving money on our bus contract, we are expending money that we aren't receiving in from, say, our pre-K program. So, our preschool generates revenue, and we are continuing to pay those teachers because they're contractual. We have an actual contract with them through the year. This sort of situation is very unanticipated. So, they are continuing to be paid. They're doing their best to do some remote learning activities with kids. But we can't reasonably expect while parents are having to find other ways to watch their children, we can't expect to receive revenues for those students. So, the savings in bus contract will largely be outweighed by a loss of revenue due to those programs. So, our food services program also is largely run on the fact that we serve many, many meals. So, now we are serving very few meals, but it's still taking at least the same effort, if not more, to do so.
And is there an update on the school bus contract idea about renegotiating that?
There's no final agreement as of yet. It's talks back and forth. I believe the Regional Director is speaking with their corporate right now to finalize what those numbers are looking like. We're looking at maybe a 25% reduction, but in doing so, the bus company will retain all of its employees and pay them. That's again what the Commissioner of Education is instructing us to do. Bus drivers are in very high demand, and they are very costly to train. So, losing sort of that workforce can be very challenging on top of the fact that, you know, to some degree, it's the right thing to do.
I was going to resist the temptation to say that the state's telling us that we have to retain our bus drivers. The state also told us we're paying 100% of regional transportation way back when. So, whatever. Glad to get that in.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. It's a challenging situation for us, but we're trying to make the best of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Francine, that's it on your reports?
That's it.
Okay. Who else? Matt?
I've got some. Chris?
Okay.
Master Plan Implementation Committee met last night along with our PVPC consultant, and we spent a good deal of time looking at the original survey that was done for the development of the master plan back in 2013 and spent time. We had all come with our own ideas and edits about questions that we might modify and/or eliminate for that, and we had a very good meeting. So, we've got a rough idea of what we can do to kind of shorten that survey, but also put in more relevant questions looking forward from now forward rather than kind of taking a look at the questions as they were maybe close to 10 years ago now. So, we will have another meeting May 11th, but the master plan is engaged and still trying to meet via Zoom. There will be a Community Preservation Committee meeting Wednesday evening at 5:30, and that will also be by Zoom. And then lastly, I just wanted to address, it's not a meeting per se, but there's been a lot of stuff on social media about the low level of Alder Pond up at the Wolf Hill Sanctuary. And so, I wanted to kind of address that maybe from the conservation point of view, just to correct any information or clarify things that people may be thinking. The Alder Pond up on Foma Road area, as people may know, is actually private property. It belongs to the Searle family. The town actually bought the conservation restriction on that about 10 years ago. So, part of it is accessible to town residents. However, when the land was there, it was always a meadow, actually. The Searles always had it as a meadow until many years ago when somebody in the family decided to have a small dam there. So, they dammed it up, had a pond there with a standpipe, and that standpipe is what lets the water levels go up and down. Well, over the years, basically, there's been a beaver dam up there or more than one probably, and that has all increased a lot of the ability for the water to rise because they plugged up the pipes. So, the water in the pond has risen to levels that we've all been familiar seeing from the road over time. And then recently, all of a sudden, it's kind of really shrunk down. And the reason is basically all the stuff that was kind of in that standpipe has kind of rotted finally, and the pressure of the water, just the weight of the water, actually kind of burst that standpipe. So, that's allowed the pond to kind of go back down to its normal land level. So, it's nothing that's been done to intentionally drain it. It's a force of nature. It was a natural occurrence. And so, maybe the beavers will get back to work again, but at this point in time, it's really up to the Searles to decide if they want to do anything about that. It's their property. It's their private property. The conservation restriction that we have on it is there's a trail there that residents are allowed to use, but we would just note again that it is private property and you're free to use it during daytime, but stay on the trails and be respectful of the fact that this is private property. As far as I know, dogs, somebody asked that question, dogs would be fine. I would encourage maybe that they be on a leash just so that they don't go running across other people's property, but the trail is there for people to get out and enjoy while we have this nice weather coming up hopefully. Okay? So, I hope that clarifies a few things, that there was nothing done intentionally there, that this was a natural occurrence, why the water level is now down to very little. That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else?
Rainy, I don't have many updates. School committee hasn't met since our last meeting. They meet again, I believe. It's not tomorrow night. I think it's Thursday night this week, and I'll be at that meeting. PQB has met a few times. We've done everything over email. Ed has been a part of that, just to approve different things, smaller stuff, and Capcom has not met. So, those are my updates.
Okay. Anything, John?
No, nothing on my committees.
Okay. There was one committee that Matt, that Emily is on to, and it's the Open Space Review Committee, and we continue to review maps, accessory maps, and chapter lands maps and, you know, review some history and current status of certain lands. The charge of the committee initially is to kind of get in front of some of the, looking at criteria for desirable lands, you know, contiguous with other conservation lands and wildlife quarters and water protection, that sort of thing, as opposed to always be on the reactionary side of it. So, that process continued with looking at various lands. A couple of questions came up at the meeting that I'm hoping Ed can speak to. One is the issue with the Beagle Club. Their fence was encroaching on the Clearwater Woodland property, and the other one had to do with the status of the open space and recreation plan and just a clarification of the funds available to hire through the most recent grant that we got. So, Ed, if you could address that, those things. I think that's about it. Chris, is there anything else that you wanted to mention from that meeting? Are you on mute or?
She is.
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, no, nothing to add, Rainy. I think that was basically just trying to get an update on what lands there might be out there that we would be interested in looking at. Yeah.
Okay. And the Council of Beijing is meeting next Wednesday morning, and the Board of Health did have an emergency meeting. As you know, we're having a meeting once a week with police, fire, emergency management, Ed, myself, and Jerry Swanson, Board of Health. And I think you get, everybody gets a summary of that. But I think Board of Health had an emergency meeting because they originally had decided not to allow perk tests and Title V inspections, but they decided that that does need to happen. There was someone who was going to not even have a place to live. And so, just thank you to Matt for like request or at least asking that question because they are essential employees, but there was some concern about whether it could be done with social distancing. So, they had an emergency meeting to allow that to happen. And then there's another meeting that's being set up for within the next couple of weeks just to discuss a lot of issues relative to COVID and the possibility of if and when we would open up the town again. So, that's about to be planned, but there's no date for that yet. So, that's it. Unless anybody has any questions, we can go ahead right to the Select Town Administrator Report.
All right. I'll just answer the one question on the Beagle Club. And yes, they have gotten back to us, and they are going to have some volunteer work parties and once the weather gets nicer and also that groups can gather again and move that fence. They have asked if we could go out there because although it shows on the survey plan that the fence is over on our line, when it was flagged, it didn't definitively flag the areas or the constraints of where the fence markings may be that actually has to be moved. So, I intend to go out there once it gets a little bit drier and mark those points in the fence for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome. A couple, I do have a few things which are not COVID-19 related. So, the Board will need to have a special meeting either preferably on May 7th or May 11th to prove the award of the bond sale, which will refinance some of the water department loans and will also be the borrowing for the dump truck, which was approved at last year's annual town meeting. So, I would just ask if a quorum of the Select Board members would be available on either May 7th or May 11th for a quick, about 10-minute meeting.
Fine with me.
Yeah.
Yeah. 7th through the 11th?
Either the 7th or the 11th.
Yeah, both are good with me.
I'll have to clear my social engagements. Yeah.
There's currently an Open Space Review Committee meeting on the 7th, but I could do the 11th.
And there's a master plan meeting scheduled for the 11th.
But not until 7 o'clock, so depending on timing.
Okay. If you can get this done in an hour.
Yeah, it should only be about 10 minutes.
Okay.
You know, depending on your availability, we can do it at like 5:30 or 6:00.
Okay. So, either one works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I vote for 6 on the 11th.
6 on the 11th?
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Now, Ed, we have a meeting scheduled for the 12th. Is that too late?
Actually, it's the 14th.
You had moved it to the 14th.
Oh, that's well because of the town caucus, right?
Right.
Which I can't imagine. You think it's going to be on?
Well, yeah, we're going to talk about that a little bit later in the meeting. So, I don't think, yeah, it's not going to happen on the 12th.
So, can we have a Select Board and signature meeting on the 12th, which was the original plan?
I believe we have to have the documents back to them on the 12th, which means not only do we have to have the approval, then I'm going to have to take the documents around for signatures, and we're going to need a town seal on them.
So, should we do this, should we do this on the 7th? Because that's only given you one day, Ed.
Yeah, yeah. I would have, I would have, I'd go for the 7th.
Yeah. I mean, Rainy, if you don't mind, it's just we're signing something, it sounds like.
Yeah, it's all right. Just the open space meeting. If it's only going to be a short meeting, I'll just join the other after.
Okay.
All right. So, what time on the 7th then? 6?
What time is open space?
Yeah.
Open space is at 6.
You want to do like 5:45?
Yeah, 5:30 or 5:45, whatever works for everybody else.
I think I'll be home that day. I'm good.
Want to do it at 5:30 then?
Fine.
Sure.
5:30 on the 7th.
All right. Jen, thank you. It'll be nice to get that taken care of. Next up, Randall Kemp, the Highway Superintendent, has completed and filed the corollary report for the MassWorks grant. Delay in the process of completing the design and getting out to bid due to the delay with MassDOT third-party peer review, we will be filing a request with the MassWorks for a drawdown amendment request to our grant budget for this fiscal year. And let's see.
Can you just explain what you mean by that?
Basically, when you, we do these, some of these grants, especially for the larger amounts that are going to carry over a number of fiscal years, what they actually ask for when you file for the grant or the contract is an estimate of what steps or what progress will be made in each quarter of that particular fiscal year. And that's how the grant is laid out. In this particular case, we had anticipated that we'd actually have some costs in the first and second quarter of this fiscal year 2020 because we expected to be out to bid early, that we would have awarded a contract, and that some preliminary work might have been done out there. In this particular case, because of the delay, it has not. So, MassWorks will allow us to amend that original budget and what they call a drawdown request because that's how you draw down, in this particular case, up to $1 million, and we estimated by quarters. So, we'll need to make a little adjustment to that.
Okay.
And actually, it was their recommendation that we do that. So, they've been very helpful through the process.
Okay. Any other questions or anything else for your report, Ed?
Got a couple more items. Just let you, let's see, got, actually, yeah, that was a drawdown. And even though the design for the East Street Bridge is on hold for the MassDOT third-party review until mid-May, VHB is still continues to do some work on other details, such as they are currently working on the cross-directional boring with oil, gas, and electric to help move the bid documents forward when the design is approved and complete. So, it's not a total standstill. Some things are still going on, and VHB is still doing some work behind the scenes for us. And then also want to let you know that the Water Department currently has the solicitation out for the request for qualifications for engineering services to perform the bid solicitation and the construction oversight for the Manhattan River Water Main relocation project on Route 10.
Any questions for Ed? Okay, so we don't have any presentations. Then we're on to old business. The first is the Shared Building Commissioner, the update. And we have, we've got three documents for posting and also a job description.
Yes, and PPBB did approve the job description that was, we had submitted to them, so that is set to go. And then from some of my conversations with John, once that job description was done, we also have to come up with a posting for the job and submit that to the PPPB. And because of the fact that we are still working with Southampton to move forward on a shared building commissioner position between Southampton and West Hampton, I wasn't quite sure the best way to do that. So, I had actually drafted two different postings. I did drafted a posting for a building commissioner just for the Town of Southampton at 32 hours and did a shared building commissioner position with the Town of West Hampton at 40 hours and shared those with John, and then John asked me if there was any way to combine those. So, I came up with a third one, which is the third document, which basically in one posting lays two different options. One that would be a shared building commissioner position with the Town of West Hampton at 40 hours, and then it states, you know, if that agreement didn't come to fruition, the action, the second action would be that we would be interviewing and hiring for a building commissioner just for the Town of Southampton at 32 hours. And then it goes on and gives the requirements for that position, which are, which would be the same requirements either way. So, I did not know if the Select Board had any preference on how this was put out there or not, but there are three different options out there on the table.
Let me just chime in a second here. The reason I thought of just having one, if I'm looking down and bouncing my PC in my lap, sorry. Let me just chime in a second here. The reason I thought of just having one, if I'm looking down and bouncing my PC in my lap, sorry. If we just have one job description with two options, people are gonna see one ad in the paper. Or if they say two separate ads, they're gonna say, well, is Southampton looking for 32 hours? Or is Southampton looking for 40? Or is it two different jobs? So by posting one with the two options, people will see that we're either gonna hire a 32 or a 40 hour, not that we're looking for two separate positions. So that was my thought on one posting, having option A and B, if you will.
I think it's Ray, John.
Yeah, I I saw that, and I think that's good. My my thought was, I wasn't sure that it was clear that Southampton would still be the lead employer on that. If that was clear in that language, that, you know, if we did have the shared one as option one with West Hampton, that we were still the, you know, the main, the lead party on that. I I don't know if that was clear in that shared description I read, but I read it quickly, so.
Probably not, but that's more in the contract with West Hampton and the contract with the person. And if you wanna wanna put it in, we could, but I think a little less is better, that's, you know.
Yeah, I actually thought the same thing when I read it. It says, it says the options, then it says, this position will report to the town administrator and select board. I I think it, I my immediate thought is that you'd say Southampton.
Yeah.
Town administrator and select board.
Okay, so you want us to assert that word, Southampton?
So I think just because it talks about West Hampton above, but just to be clear, even though the posting says Southampton, I just think it should be specific.
Yeah, I think anybody who would be applying would say, well, gee, who am I, who am I supposed to be, you know, reporting to? Who do I work for? You know, I think that would just be clearer. And then just one other quickie question. On the on the job description itself, I don't know if you made any changes on it, but on the first page, it talks about a date of approval on that that is from, I'm thinking it was.
17?
2017, so does that need to change, or is that okay?
Ed, that was a PQB question.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that change?
Yeah, that that was just the date of the original one.
Right.
That we worked off, so that now the current date is that they approved it. Oh, God, Art sent me the.
Last week.
Believe it's April 26th is the new date.
So we didn't end up changing that in the in the job description then, or?
Yeah, actually, he sent me the new job description, so that is what will get posted with this.
And that was my only comment on that, yeah.
Any other comments about the posting? There was one other option that was raised last select board meeting, that was the possibility of joining with another larger district.
Oh, yes, I can give you up there on that. I reached out to the building departments in each town, East Hampton and Westfield, didn't get a call back. Talked to Tom Quinville, Quinville, yeah, Quinlan, and he gave me information that East Hampton, for instance, they weren't having office hours, so they weren't there. He also let me know that the building inspector in East Hampton is just at a building inspector, it's not a building commissioner yet. So anyways, I reached out to the mayor in East Hampton, I should tell, and I'm gonna be reaching out to Mayor Homicide tomorrow. Start with them and we'll work our way down.
Thanks so much for doing this, John. I know it's a lot of work. Appreciate it.
Great. Any other questions?
And just a couple other things, and I'll do it under this shared building commissioner update. We've already basically taken care of the the posting also, which was a separate agenda item. Tom has, is willing and has offered to help us out in the interim in between, like on nights and weekends, and he would be amendable to doing, taking the $40 per inspection that, like an alternate inspector would receive, and he would, for the interim, keep the keys to the office to get in and also the town cellphone and the the internet booster, so that people could contact him. Also, we could utilize our alternate building inspector on the same premise. You know, Ron Lauren or John Flag, it's $40 per inspection. My understanding is Ron Lauren, who's a full-time employee currently for the city of Westfield, and also does some construction work and Title V work on the side, is fairly busy, so might not have quite the availability that either Tom might after after hours, but that has been offered to us if the board would like to take him up on that.
I don't know that we have many other choices. Tom did say yesterday when I talked to him that he was trying to get everything lined up, so when he does leave, there's nothing that at least he's aware of that's gonna come crashing down, but, you know, you can never tell who's gonna walk in the door every day.
No, and people are gonna need updates on their inspections and stuff like that.
Now, Ed, is Art gonna be in the office, his regular hours during this transition?
Well, I I mean, as long as the stay-at-home order is in place, Art will be at home. He comes in maybe once a week, depending on how busy it is, and will like pick up any checks or whatever to do the turnovers, to do any preliminary work on building permits and what have you. And I also will tell you that Tom told me today all those things that slowed slowed down, you know, quite a bit. He has gotten applications for six new houses in the last two days, so. That was good news.
And, well, I think it's very generous of him to be willing to help out, and hopefully we'll have a candidate, we won't have to go that route, but it's nice to know that we have an option. I appreciate that.
Yeah, now with this social distancing, obviously we can't have a going away party for him, so.
No, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So after all the social distancing is over, maybe we'll just have to take a going away party to him. Hadley.
Yeah, they don't know us in Hadley. That's probably a good idea.
Anything else? So will those positions, I mean, are they already ready, set to go, be posted?
Well, the the next step is I will take this, make the one adjustment to it, and I will put it with a PRF, and I will scan them and send them off to Art tonight, so that the PPPB can approve the posting of that position. And if the select board wants to pre-approve it, and instead of waiting for it to come back for a meeting, you could vote to approve its posting at tonight's meeting by a motion and vote, and then we can just get it signed in the interim after PPPB does.
Yeah, and and just as an aside, because we're always interested in this, the part-time posting is 32 hours, not 35 that Tom was doing. And I discussed it, we figure 32 hours is for eight-hour days. Should be, you know, more efficient than trying to put 35-hour person in. Plus, the salary range that Ed did some research on with PQB will hopefully bring this all in under budget, too, so. Looking at that part, too, as we go along.
How do people feel about the approval pending PQB and accountant, I guess, at this point, because finance doesn't have to approve, correct?
Yes, Vicki will have to initial it also.
Yeah.
Yeah, the money, the money's in the budget, so from a finance point of view, it shouldn't be an issue.
Do you like to pre-approve it? If so, maybe a motion then?
I moved to pre-approve.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Mine.
Balls eye.
Fishman eye.
Roden eye. All right, thank you, and thanks again, John, for all your work on that.
No, no problem.
Okay, so the next is the East Street Bridge. Is there more to say about that?
No, we've covered that one.
Okay, and you said the middle of May is when we expect to hear back?
May 13th was the deadline that MAST DOT had given to the third party. Independent review, so we should hear right around that date.
Okay, thanks. Next then is the East Hampton Media contract. We've been discussing this quite a bit, and some last-minute things were sent to us from East Hampton Media. I think the last time we discussed the issues that were still up in the air. Oh, what would you like to do?
Um, hi, everybody. Jen Ramsey, East Hampton Media. Um, I I was sent a version yesterday from Ed, and I think it looks great. I don't really have any problems with it. The only question I have for you is the procurement and the ability to purchase equipment in an emergency situation, how that would work?
And from my understanding from town council, and I've asked them to clarify it, but from the original understanding, whether it's the capital funds or the budgetary funds, they at least need to be appropriated by a town meeting, so my suggestion, because, okay, what we're going to be doing shortly is anticipated, and we can identify pretty much what we're gonna be doing. Obviously, if something breaks along the way that is unanticipated, we would need to go back to or wait for a town meeting to do that, so my thought process might be that whatever the dollar amount we think is going to cover the current upgrades, whether that be $39,000 or $40,000 from from your quotes, Jen, is that perhaps we actually ask for maybe $43,000 or $44,000 to be appropriated, do it under an article versus a budget line item. Articles carry forward from fiscal year to fiscal fiscal year, so might give, you know, a little bit of buffer, so that if something comes up in in the interim, it can be covered, and perhaps at the point that that buffered amount ends up getting the used on something that's, you know, not not anticipated or whatever, or just breaks, that at that point, we remember that we've utilized those funds, and maybe we approve or ask town meeting to approve another $4,000 or $5,000 out there in case something else breaks again.
Yeah, that's, that was a good suggestion. Our lawyer also suggested perhaps building in an article to appropriate maybe $5,000 to East Hampton Media from the peg axis capital expenditures, just for emergency purposes, like appropriate a set dollar amount that we could use in an emergency if we we have a breakage of something and we have to replace it right away.
That's a good way to go.
Yeah, okay. Um, everything else in the the version you sent me yesterday, Ed, looks good. There were a couple of questions, but I think we ran through them in the last meeting, so I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but um, one of them was just striking the need for a certified financial audit, because we don't, you know, we don't need to, we're under $500,000. But I agree with all the changes. I think they're great.
Okay. Would the select board like to go through the second copy that is a little bit cleaner and without having the one that I sent as an attachment, which was yellow highlighted, the one that would be scanned in the big package, it would be the items that are highlighted in gray that were changes that came up or brought up at the last minute, or we're at the last meeting, I should say, or we had talked about making previously.
Yeah, I I think working from the cleaner copy is better, the second copy.
That's, that's why I did it that way, yeah. That's why I did it rather than making any more edits to the first.
No, that's just too confusing now, but I only saw two sections, as I read through it, that seemed to have some strikeouts that, you know, we just wanted to verify that that's what we meant, and that was in, I think, section eight under insurance and section 12 under budget. I think those are the only two that had a whole bunch of, not a whole bunch, but a couple sentences stricken out, stricken out, that maybe we just wanna review those. It's page five and seven of the contract.
Yeah, and and basically, there was one small change on the top of page one, you know, for the date, and that, you know, is still subject to change.
Right.
There was nothing on page two, you're right. Nothing on page three. Nothing on page four. And then on page five, in the second section, the town was stricken out and East Hampton Media was put in, and that's the section seven under equipment and facilities that we had talked about. Yeah.
That allows them to initiate the bidding process, right, to purchase?
It means that they basically, they own the equipment, they would be able to bill us for it, and they would own it until the time that the contract wasn't extended or basically was terminated, at which time all that equipment would be turned back over to the town of Southampton, under the premise that it be used for peg access purposes. And then in section B of that, it's the same thing. You're seeing the sections that struck out that where the town would own own the equipment and that the section that East Hampton Media had suggested and has been reviewed by our attorney that they shall own all the equipment and the facilities acquired by it and purchased with funds received pursuant to this agreement, and that they would retain ownership, they would maintain all that equipment until the point, again, that the agreement was terminated or a successor agreement was not negotiated.
And then the the insurance section eight, that certificate of insurance sentence was struck just because it's repeated further in section eight that we have to provide the town a certificate of insurance, so I just, it looked repetitive.
Redundant.
Yep.
Page six, there was not any changes on it. On page seven, under section 12, reports and budgets, you know, Jen had talked at the last meeting about, you know, they didn't have their financials done until on January 31st, so I just threw in the suggestion of May 31st of each year, and and then there's the clause in there, or or such other date as may be agreed upon by the parties if they aren't ready on that particular day.
That seems fine.
And then under F, you'll see it's highlighted, and there's just a note there that East Hampton Media requests this clause to be stricken as they are not required to be required to be audited by the MAST AG as their annual income is $500,000. This would add another $4,000 in cost to their budget, so I didn't just automatically strike it, but highlighted it and left it up to the board if they would like and are willing to strike that clause.
I I think you could eliminate the section that would add $4,000 to their budget. You're not putting that in, are you?
No.
That's just a note. That's just a note.
Yeah, it's just a note. I had called our our accountant and asked how much it would cost to do a certification. Yeah.
Fine.
Yeah, I think we talked last time that the need for a certified financial statement wasn't really that crucial, given the oversight that East Hampton Media does, along with their board of directors, et cetera. That's what I remember from our discussion last meeting, so I would be in favor of eliminating the need for the certified financial statement. Certified audit financial statement.
Yes.
Okay, so the consensus is to strike F?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, page eight. About halfway down, it's the third paragraph under A, which is section 13, funding. It's the third paragraph under A, which is section 13, funding. It's the clause they were asking about, what about expected breakage, which couldn't be planned, and we just addressed that, I believe.
Yep.
Okay. And then under same section, same page, under B, funding for PEG access service. East Hampton Media and Jen had asked that franchise be stricken and licensed, so it read license fees, because that's the correct terminology rather than franchise fees. Next, page nine, section D. East Hampton Media had agreed to strike out that section and dealing with late payment. And then section 14, receipt of approved funding. Just calling your attention to East Hampton Media reserves the right to suspend any or all services if this agreement, if payments from the town are delayed. So they basically added that sentence, but deleted all penalties up above in D. Next, page 10, under section 18, termination of agreement, transfer of assets. Section C, just deleted the term not owned by East Hampton Media. So that would now read, within 30 days of the termination of this agreement, East Hampton Media shall transfer to the town any equipment or facilities. Nothing, no edits on 11. And basically, the only thing on 12 at the bottom, it still had their East Hampton Media's ECAT name and the old address. So I edited that, the new one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It had gotten done on that last page where it gets signed for the name, but it hadn't gotten changed there. And that is it.
Good.
So I'm okay with moving this forward. I think it's, you know, it protects both parties. It clearly lays out the responsibilities of East Hampton Media.
Could you just review that it's a three-year contract and the starting date is what?
The date of signing, whenever.
Okay, so it's not retroactive?
No.
Okay.
And it is a three-year contract.
Yep. And the other points we had previously discussed about, I think our attorney had strengthened the indemnification. We dealt with the issue of the equipment. The extra 5% stays in and the payment kind of strong language is removed. Were there any other points that anybody wanted to talk about?
No, I think this covers it. Okay, I think we can move forward. Yeah.
Sounds good.
So would you like to make a motion and second and vote on approving the contract as amended? And then I will amend it and then I'll just have to track down some of you for signatures and then it'll go over to East Hampton Media.
I'll make an amendment. We accept the East Hampton Media contract as amended.
And I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
All of them.
Tishman eye.
Martin eye. Matt's on mute.
Roland eye.
Roden eye. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Jen, for your diligent work, working with me.
Appreciate your help as well. We look forward to working with you in the future.
Absolutely.
So Jen, before you sign off there, you know, what's, what do you think, or Ed, what is the next step in terms of getting better equipment? What is our, what is our plan?
Well, Jen's going to take a look at it again. We had a conversation the other day because a couple of items that I had brought up, which may change things a little bit, is I did ask her, because of what we're going through or what we started going through before we started using the Zoom meetings or the social distancing of trying to get six feet apart and what have you. And we've got, obviously, some boards that might be five members, some that might be seven or whatever. I asked her if she could take a look at a microphone that would be just as good as what we originally intended or what they originally specked out, but rather than being actually fixed or drilled into these desks, might be able to just sit on them and be moved a little bit to accommodate those things. So she's going to take a look at that. And the other thing I did ask about was to make sure that the new system would also, in addition to these microphones, one at the podium, would also be able to accommodate a cordless microphone so that it could be passed around. But once that's done, we will have to put an article on this annual town meeting for the expenditure of those funds.
And what's the date of that meeting?
That's going to be a tough one. Right now it is June 5th, I think.
Okay. Just like I can plan ahead to make sure I get you the proposal far in advance.
Yeah, it just, you know, if it does not get pushed off again due to what, any new restrictions or lesser restrictions, maybe after May 18th.
I have down June 9th.
Okay, that sounds better. I was trying to do it from my memory, so.
That's okay. Well, hopefully, you know, this has been a long time coming. So thank you, Jen, for your work. And also, Robert, if you're on the line as our representative for the board, thanks, everybody, for your help. But getting the equipment has been also a long time coming. So hopefully, it won't be delayed too, too much. And we can get some, you know, people can hear us at home and there have been long time problems with the equipment. So I'm hoping we can move forward on those.
Well done, everyone. Thank you. This is wonderful work from the board in East Hampton. And away we go.
Thanks, Robert.
Cheers.
Anything else on the East Hampton Media?
I just want one more question. Jen, last time, I think you said you were looking for at least one more board member from Southampton?
Yeah, I believe we have an opening. So if anyone's interested, they can send a letter of interest to us, either by email, info@easthamptonmedia.org, or give us a call and we can talk about it.
Okay.
Jen, would you like to share the news about our new chair?
Yeah, sure. I mean, last night, we had our April board meeting and there were some board terms that were up. And our president has stepped down after seven years of service, James Zarvis. And we thanked him. And then we had a new president voted in, Erica Flood, who joined the last select board meeting. I think you met her. So Erica is our new president of the board.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Good.
All right, so moving on with old business. The next is the FY 2020 budget revenue and expense. So everybody got a copy of the revenue expense report?
Yeah.
Yes.
What questions? Do people want to start with the revenue first?
You know, this is just a picky one, but it always has the end date on the revenue report that is incorrect. And somebody writes in the right date. Why can't we just put the right date in originally? So it's there on file with the proper date.
They're canned programs.
But if it can say 4/16, why can't it say March 31st?
Because that's the period it was actually run through.
But you're saying the revenue hasn't been posted through the 16th, only posted through the 31st.
First, correct.
Okay, so the report was run through the 16th, but we only posted. So it's our posting versus when the report was run to calculate it.
Correct.
Okay. Seems a little odd, but I hear what you're saying.
Well, the only really question I had about it was the 8.14% for the payment in lieu of taxes. Is that just, is that just delayed because our tax bill is delayed?
My memory on payments in lieu of taxes is it is a, doesn't, it isn't like quarterly, it is a one-time issuance and payment.
So then that's been extended to June 1st is, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, you'd be correct. But if my memory is correct, it's not normally due, I think, until the March or April timeframe, anyway.
Okay.
No, I mean, obviously, our revenue through the end of March shows comparatively through the income, which is, sorry, the expenses which are through the end of, or through the middle of April, right? A couple of weeks off on that, is that right?
Exactly.
Yeah. So the difference, a fair amount of that difference is probably just because of the property taxes that haven't come in yet realistically, because of the delay, right?
Correct.
But yeah, that's pretty normal though, because we get the revenue at certain points during the year versus on a regular monthly basis where the expenses are every month.
Right.
There's always a disconnect there.
Yeah. And of course, I will caution us a little bit on the revenue side because everything's been posted through March 31st. Don't forget that this, whether you call it lockdown, stay at home, non-essential business closures didn't happen until after mid-March. So I'm more concerned about, you know, the last 25% of those local revenues that would be coming in in April, May, and June, and what the effect may be on those. And I will say that I was on a conference call briefing today and, you know, the state and the Division of Revenue have come out and it made me feel a little better because I was a little wondering about this fiscal year. Said that anything that was in the cherry sheets that towns and cities were told they were going to receive this fiscal year 2020, we're still going to get.
Oh, that's good. And the only thing I say, this is an improvement. I mean, to have a two-week lag as opposed to a two-month lag, this is much better. So it gives us a better pick, a handle on where we are with our cash flow.
Any other questions about the revenue? You want to talk about the expenses?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions on expenses when you get to it.
Yeah, I do too.
All right, let's get to it. Ready, John?
Chris, go ahead. Your, ladies first.
No, it's okay. I guess I'm just curious on the police outside detail. One that looked like it was a bit over the 100% expenditure. And if that was still, some of the carryover from way back went on the Eversource deal, if that had all been settled or if this is still.
It's been taken care of.
So this is maybe still because we're still on the Glendale Road part? Or is there something else that's happening there?
Well, don't forget with our detail payments, we pay our officers in the pay period that they actually did the detail or earned. And we may not actually collect from the vendor for, it could be two to four weeks after.
Wrong, yeah.
We have to bill them and then receive it.
Yeah, all right, that's doable. There was a couple others. Let me find them, sorry. Something to do with, there was a question about the capital, the capital funds for water and the pumping station. Just curious as to what that cost was all about in terms of being a big chunk. It's, it's whatever the budget, it's number 31. I think it's capital funds, water. There was something about the, if I can read it on my little screen here, hold on. Yeah, there was the water pump station, about $164,000 over what was predicted there. So just curious what that's all about. I can't tell you the page, I'm sorry.
It's page 12.
Okay.
At least of the expense report, I think.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Are you able to speak to that, Ed? It's 139% over budget.
And then the water projects one right under it as well, both.
And I'm going to take a stab at this, but those bids did come up over what was actually estimated and predicted in the capital funds. So that the Water Department was using some of the approved borrowings to close that gap, but I will get you the exact figures for you.
Okay. And then for me, just one more, back on number 28, which is the Community Preservation Fund. I just wanted to be sure. I know at some point in time, CPC had to put out some money to purchase the Palmer and Meadow Road property and that was under a bonding arrangement as well. And I don't know if that future liability, I don't think, I'm not sure that any money is due yet. Interest might be due this year, but if not, it's certainly due next year. And I didn't know if there was a line item already created in the ledger for that future debt. And I was just thinking that we ought to do that before we lose track of it. And I don't know, I'm not seeing it. Visibly, I'm not catching it in CPC account unless it's somewhere else. I didn't see it under the town debt account either. So I just wanted to make sure that we've committed.
It's actually, it's actually one of the pieces of the bonding that is out for sale right now. So that's why you won't see it here.
But will it, will it end up being separately reported under the CPC? One will come in under the CPC page when it is done or?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it'll show up there or if it'll show up under basically principal and interest debt.
Uh huh, okay. It just, it just needs to be identifiable somehow, right? So, yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, and so I wasn't, I wasn't clear if that's where that, you know, if that had already been done, because that's been a while since we had done the, you know, the purchase on the Palmer and Meadow. And I just wanted to be sure that we didn't lose track of that future liability for the bonding. Even though it hasn't been done yet, we know there's an amount we have to put out, right?
Right, and we won't know the exact amounts per year until we get that bond sale back.
Okay. That's, that's all I have for questions.
And my memory is that between the treasurer working with CPC, I believe that CPC asked for that to be amortized, isn't the right word, but borrowed over a 10-year period.
It is, yeah. It was a 10-year bond, yeah, that they wanted, yeah, exactly. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay.
John, you had some questions?
Well, you know, I did, but fortunately, Chris went first and I recalculated. I was looking at, we're about eight and a half months through the fiscal year, but actually, we're nine and a half months. So I recalculated, I was looking at a number of the wage lines that seem to be well over, but using the right figure, they're right in line. So, thanks for going first, Chris.
Actually, I do have one more, sorry, I did. Under the other special revenue funds, I noticed that we do have three lines down there now for COVID, COVID wages, expenses, and public health COVID. And those are all showing as expenditures. And I'm just wondering, is that against the PVPC money that we got? And does that PVPC money show in as revenue somewhere? Because I wasn't identifying that either, but I'm just maybe not familiar with the terminology.
What page?
Other special revenue, so it's number 24, page seven on the expenditure report.
Right in the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The three COVID lines, so just curious, that's showing as expenditure, which I understand. But was it related to the PVPC money that we got or the state money we got through PVPC?
The last one, the public health COVID-19, should be the DPH money received through PVPC. The other two are accounts that Vicki Morrow set up so that we could isolate costs going forward. The other two are accounts that Vicky Morrow set up so that we could isolate costs going forward. Disaster declaration.
Yeah.
That we'd be eligible for receiving a seventy-five percent reimbursement for. So that's what those are.
But of the funds that we received, was it four thousand dollars?
Received for what, from DPH?
Yes.
We, we've now received two contracts under that, and if I'm, and again, I'm going by my memory, it's like nine thousand four hundred dollars, I think, or ninety-four.
Yeah, it's four and five.
Four, okay, I only heard about the four, okay, that's good.
So at some point, I'd like to understand the difference between the, what is the difference between COVID wages and expense? And then what's the, the public health COVID nineteen? What is that?
Well, the COVID health nineteen, public health nineteen are those correctly associated with the funds that we would have received from PVPC for those eligible ones.
Okay.
The other, other two is, and rightfully so, because some of us have been through this before. Charlie asked if we could set up, if Vicky could set up some funds that, as we make our expenditures, that are normal budgetary items we would have purchased strictly to address COVID nineteen, that those be isolated so that we had a very easy way when we have to file for our reimbursement with FEMA to pull those costs out and to work with them, rather than putting them into their own line item account that they might have normally fallen into. And then whether it's three months, six months, or nine months from now, have everybody scrambling back through their invoices and their regular accounts to try to see what they, what they spent.
Okay. Any, what other questions people have about the expenses?
They all look pretty good.
Well, after you say that, I will give you a forewarning that between having some unplanned expenses to patch up a leak in the roof here at Town Hall, and also the issues we had with one of the boilers probably back about six weeks ago, I will, I will be overspending the Town Hall expense by probably about forty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, how old is that boiler, do you know?
I'm, I shouldn't do this, I'm assuming those two boilers were new when this building was done back in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven. I don't think they were here prior to that, but I'm not sure.
So there's no warranty on them?
Well, even if there was, it would be long over with by now. And, and of course, one, one of the disadvantages to these very cost-efficient, high-efficiency boilers is they're basically all computer-run, so they have sensors in them and computer boards, much like our cars do. So when they do go, it's not inexpensive, to say the least.
Do we have a maintenance agreement on these, Ed?
We don't have a maintenance agreement on these, we have the agreement with BG where they come in and they do like normal preventative maintenance, they change the filters, check the belts, replace the belts, items like that.
That's, that's a maintenance review, so they take care of them during the year?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and, and in this particular case, there were a couple of sensors that went, and one costly, actually, it ended up to being one in each boiler. So there was two costly computer boards. I think they were about eight hundred and fifty dollars each, one for each boiler. So my memory is the total cost for that repair was about thirty-two hundred dollars.
Was the roof done over when the building was renovated, too?
Yes.
And, and so that was our, that was what, ten years, ten to fifteen years ago?
It would have been about ten years ago, but it wasn't like a roof shingle failure. It was where the roof met and was sealed with one of the HVAC vents. So what water was getting into that area, so they actually had to peel back the roofing around it, peel up the EPDM on the actual HVAC vent and redo that whole area.
I just have another question about the expenses. There are two, and the, and again, there's a board, there's a council meeting next Wednesday, so I can certainly ask about this there. But it seems like the, the wages, COA wages are up at like ninety-six percent. Is that because some of the money will be coming for the rest of the fiscal year out of the grant, the formula grant? And the other question has to do with the van, there was an adjustment made on the van, because usually, isn't it about thirty-one, thirty-two thousand dollars a year for the van? And then it looks like there's an adjustment, it's already up there, sort of overspent.
The, uh, my memory is it's about thirty thousand dollars for the van. And the COA has had some unanticipated, shall we say, wage costs this year because of an individual being out on the extended sick leave. Obviously, and that's what is feeding into this.
That's why going back to the discussion that we've been having about, do we get disability insurance outside? Or do we kind of set up another, another pool of money so that departments aren't impacted negatively when things that are, they can't help are, occur? Then they lose a wage, yeah.
Okay, so will there be a plan going forward to fill that gap at some point when we get closer to the end of the fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions about revenue or expenses? Okay, then, next thing on the agenda is flipping back between screens and the phone screen, so hang on. Old Business is, next steps, disposal of surplus real property at Ninety-three College Highway. Ed sent out a proposal for the bid.
And it's, it's strictly a draft, it's my first take on it, so, you know, just something to, you can look at, pull some ideas out of, but.
So, so Ed, is it in our package online, did you send this, rather?
No, I emailed it separately to you today.
I did, I did go over, I'm just trying to bring it back, I'm working from two computers here. I did, I did have a bunch of questions on it, so.
Well, of course you did, if you didn't, I'd be shocked. You've been doing this longer than I have.
I, I know, and I, so if it's just the first draft, do you just want me to sit down with Ed and go over my, my questions? Or do you want to go over them here?
I'd rather go over them here, I have a couple of things, minor things, Ed, I'll just forward my copy back to you. Just really edits more than anything, but I have a couple of more substantial questions, so I think it's worth having a discussion as a board, though.
Sure, okay, okay.
So John, you want to start?
Sure, and I don't, let me see if I can bring it up in, in front of me here. If you don't mind me taking a second here, trying to find it. Okay, let me, I'll go over what I have in front of me. One, one thing I think we should put in here is that the person that purchasing the property should have no outstanding tax liens against, against them. Because we don't want to start with somebody that owes us money, and then we have to take money on the property. So I think something about no outstanding taxes should be part of the, the bid.
Hang on one second, I'm actually, you can't see me because I'm actually looking at the document. I thought that. Oh, you can, hello, all right, so I, I thought that was in there. I thought there was something about must comply with all laws and.
Well, those are tax laws and everything, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure that would be in.
I mean, we can, we can spell it out just to be more precise.
Okay.
The next one, you said, Ed, if anybody has any questions, to submit them to you. Normally, what happens is there is a deadline for submitting questions, and then you have to do an addendum with all the questions you receive and the town's responses to post to the website or wherever this is posting. So everybody gets the same answer, so they're on fair grounds?
Correct, and, and that's why you will see on, let's see, where is that? On the very second page, documents comprising this bid package, there is a list, there's an acknowledgement form for addendums, if any.
Right, but it, it doesn't say a timeframe that people can submit questions to you by. So technically, they can submit it up till right before the bid, which gives somebody an unfair advantage if they ask you a question at three fifty, then submit it a bit at four. So there's normally a deadline for submitting questions.
Right.
And then posting the addendums so everybody can see them. If you don't have word, if you don't have wording for that, I'd be glad to get it for you.
Is that like one, a one-week deadline usually, or?
That's actually usually less than that, it's usually three or four days.
I, I guess we have different thoughts on that, it's just the key is give people enough time to see the questions asked and incorporate any of their responses into their bid package.
Yeah.
Okay, so as, as you go through the document, it refers to parcels and parcel. There's only one parcel, so there's some terms you may have to just, you know, correct on there to make it specify one parcel. But that was your first draft, so I'm sure that's where that comes from.
Well, well, if that's all, because when I did this originally a number of years ago, there were two parcels, so I thought I'd cut all those. And if, and if, if you don't find anything that says Beckett, at least I've caught all of those.
Okay, that's good. It's, it, in a couple of places, it says May second, and for bid opening in June second. And June second, I believe, is the date you want, so.
The, all those dates, I'm gonna have to recalculate once we've actually finalized it, so I just threw something in there.
Okay. Parcels, parcels. Down, down below on page six says, "Successful bidder shall provide town with legal proof that they have access to enter property," which we discussed, but the paragraph below states there is X amount of frontage on Gun Road. So if there's frontage, they don't need to say there's access.
There is no frontage on Gun Road, I can tell you that.
I wasn't sure of that, I had to go back and check it, I knew there wasn't on College Highway.
So maybe we should be specific and say, this is landlocked, anybody bidding must show proof that they have access to the property from on a butter, or something like that.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be clearer.
Yeah, because that way it'll get rid of anybody that thinks they're gonna have a road going in there and farm it and all that stuff.
Right.
Okay, the other ones are just dates that are conflicting and all that, but I'll, I'll send you that, that's not a, a major thing, I don't need to go over that here.
And all of the detail that's, you know, indicated by those Xs, I'm sure will be filled in, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, the only question I had, it was kind of contradictory from what we talked about, was the one that John raised about the frontage on Gun Road. Thank you for that.
And I'm assuming that it's gonna be a cash transaction, we're not, town's not gonna finance this, right?
No.
A couple of quick questions from my point of view, is there a minimum time or that one has to put this out for bid? Is that, you know, you've got it right now, looking like a month open, that seems like a long time to me to have this transaction done.
Actually, under a normal bid process, I would make it anywhere from a month to longer. However, I will be the first to tell you that while I've called this an invitation for bids, and we're pretty much doing it as an invitation for bids, it does not fall under the state procurement laws because of the dollar value to actually follow the invitation for bid, dollar for dollar. And I would probably suggest something like three weeks.
Yeah, I was gonna say three weeks, if you can do it with all this COVID going on, so faster we get this done, the better it is for everybody.
And I think some of the supporting documents that people would need to submit would be what would be taking the time more than anything.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
So we talked last time about specifying that it's farming, and then we also talked about the easement. We also talked about the landlock issue, that it has to be someone who has legal access to the land. We also talked about preserving the right to basically not take any bid, to refuse any particular bid. And we also talked about no minimum amount, so I'm surprised to see that there was a minimum bid put in there. I thought we talked about not having a minimum bid.
We did, it's highlighted, I'm just bringing it up again, that's up to the select board.
Yeah, I personally, a minimum bid of twenty-five hundred seems to be a low enough threshold that nobody is gonna have an issue. Because it's appraised at quite a bit more than that, and we all agreed, I think, that's, that was too high, the appraisal.
Well, and I'll be honest, the twenty-five hundred dollars is from the two parcels that I did probably about four years ago. So I, I just left it in there and highlighted it to, just to have the discussion. And I went back, we have the parcel assessed at twenty-four, nine. I have not found my notes from MDR of what they think its value is, my memory is, and Francine.
Yes.
My memory is it was somewhere around eleven or twelve.
Okay, I, I thought it was, I thought it was around eight, eight or nine.
You could, you could be right.
So twenty-five hundred is ten percent of what the town has assessed it at, then, right?
Right.
Okay.
I still say no minimum, I still prefer no minimum bid.
And you can do that, like I say, it's just in here for the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'd just like to hear what other people say about it. And I actually thought MDR was closer to fourteen, but I'm not sure. Whatever.
We all have to find our notes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I don't really care about whether there's a minimum bid or not, but we did have a discussion about this last, last week with regard to, I mean, somebody could come in and bid a dollar on this, if we don't have a minimum, which they're kind of having some type of a minimum, like, you know, does pull out those types of people, the fifty-dollar, the hundred-dollar, you know, I don't know.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I, is there any, I mean, does anybody care about that? Does it matter? I mean?
Well, again, the seriousness of it, like you said, it, it takes the people that are gonna fool around. Does anybody think twenty-five hundred dollars is a high cost for eight acres of farmland?
Yes, because it's not farmland, it's basically a ravine that has no value to it whatsoever. It can't be farmed, it's not, it's not a flat grassy land, I live right next to it.
Isn't it being farmed now, Chris, for hay or cattle and grazing on it?
Around it, around it is, the perimeter is the grassland, but even that, that's what's eroding. So acreage has been lost on the farmland bordering it, but the eight acres itself is a gully with fallen down trees and a little stream running through it because of the water coming through the culverts under, under Route Ten. So it is, it itself cannot.
It's that wooded area, is it not, Chris? It's that, it's woods, it's woods with a stream.
Yeah, it's the grove, what we used to call the grove, so it's, it's basically a wooded area. a wooded area where a lot of the trees have fallen down in now because there's nothing stabilizing the banks where they are. So around the perimeter is where it is still being haved, although there are various gullies and ditches there that make it incredibly unsafe or attractive to go across certain parts of it, because you can sink in. The ground is very soft there with all the water coming through it from the culvert.
So the condition of this property is really detracting from surrounding farmland?
Yeah, no, it's destroying part of the adjoining farmland because the, the erosion is, is backing itself up. If you go down Route 10, you can look over to your right, and you will see that there's a big V that's coming from the wooded section across the grassland toward Route 10, and that is just all the erosion that's happening that's cutting out acreage of good farmland right there, too. But the, the part of, part of the parcel itself is really just a wooded ravine, basically.
And I just want to remind you, like when you said, having a minimum bid of like $2,500 would quote, "Remove anybody who's not serious." Like, the fact of the matter is, there's only two people have legal access to this land, so we're not talking about removing, you know, anonymous bidders. Only two, two people have legal access to this land. The town bought this land for $1, and it was for the intention of the town getting money to fix the land. Nothing that the town did in spite of thousands and thousands of dollars actually fixed this particular land. The whole intention of this is to provide it back to the farm where it originally was, or at least back to APR land, where there would be opportunities for grants now, it's kind of a reversal of the situation, so that there'd be opportunities for funds to be able to fix the land once and for all. We have a growing problem with erosion, and if anything gets built on the top of that hill across from Comon Farm, it's gonna be 10 times worse. So I, I don't know what we're talking about when it comes to like a minimum bid, like remove people who aren't serious. There's two people who have legal access to this land.
Yeah, by the criteria that we established in the bid.
Right. That's a more, actually, that's a more restrictive criteria of having the legal access than having a minimum bid, at least in my opinion.
It seems like when you put those kinds of criteria in, you kind of alleviate the need for having a minimum bid.
Well, the minimum bid is to get some value for the town, that's, if you, if you want to let it go for a dollar, I mean, you're right next to it, Chris, so I mean, that's, that's a different thing. But from my point of view, and just my, my background is, it should always be a reasonable value on something when you bid it out. And 10% of what it's, you know, assessed at, to me, was a reasonable value, so I was comfortable with that, but.
But by whose assessment? I mean, if it's somewhere between $8,000 and $14,000?
Well, the town assessed it at 25, and, and the other folks came in and assessed it, people say somewhere between 8 and 14. So it, I mean, what, what does your house assess that? I mean, the town assesses it. Is that what it's worth? I don't know, I'm just going on what the town assessment was and what the other assessment came in as. And 2,500 is well below any of it, that's all.
Well, no, if you go by the 8 or 14, it's either $800 or $1,400.
Well, no, I think that 10% of what it was assessed at is what we're doing now, I wasn't saying that, but, but you know, hey, we all have different thoughts on that, that's just the way my, you know, the field I was in, it was always, we need to get a reasonable value, and this is, you know, I, I haven't talked to any farmers to see if this is reasonable or not, so.
Can you folks hear me?
Yeah.
Who was that?
Can you hear me?
Yes, who's speaking?
Hi, sorry, it's Cheryl, sorry, we were having some Zoom technical difficulties, sorry, so we just wanted to comment.
Can she identify herself fully?
Yeah, just, your name and address, Cheryl, okay, full name?
Sure.
Before you do that, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we made a rule that if we can't see the person or verify the person by picture, we're not gonna allow that person to talk, and last meeting, we didn't allow somebody to talk. So I just wanna be careful, Cheryl, can you put your camera on?
No, because I'm on my desktop, and I brought my camera to work, so, okay, sorry.
Can I say something? Can I say something? I don't want to take credit for this idea either, but, but it was brought to my attention, and I just briefly looked it up, and I'm, I'm sorry to throw a curveball in this, but there seems to be such thing as like, for land of low value, which of course this is, can we just, I mean, could we pivot to like in a butters auction on this?
Well, this is what it's pretty much gonna be, because we put the restrictions on it.
No, but why couldn't we just do it in a butters live auction? And have the minimum set to $0? Does that solve any of these problems that we're having, or not? I mean, I don't get why this needs to be done under like sealed bid for such a low value, it doesn't even comply with that, it doesn't even hit a value amount to be needed to do that. Yeah, I mean, John, you would know this, but like, we're not hitting value, value targets here for this.
No.
This is a lot, a lot of time for not a lot of, there's no value in this.
And I don't disagree with what we're trying to do, but, you know that article I sent around, you folks from AIG's office? That's what I've been living with for 20 years, and to me, that's why I'm trying to put this in line to, so nobody can come back to us.
No, but, but under legal law, like the treasurer could dispose of this.
Sure, yeah, you can, you can do something like that, if, if that's in the best, what do you call it, needs of the town. I, I fall back on, we have a fiduciary responsibility as elected officials, I just, like I said, I don't care where this land goes. I just want to make sure nobody can come back on us.
No, but so I don't disagree with you with some, for something of high value, it's just that this doesn't.
Value doesn't.
The treasurer can't dispose of this.
What?
The treasurer cannot dispose of this. Land of low value in a treasurer disposal is for foreclosures, properties that were taken by the town, this was not.
Well, that's why I brought it up, I want to make sure that I'm fully informed here, but, I mean, why couldn't we just have in a butters auction since we're?
Well, I mean, to do that, you don't even have to have in a butters auction. You could say that we're confining this to any butters that have legal access to the property, and just mail them and let them bid on it.
Yeah, but can you have it be done live? Like, why does it have to, like, I'm, I'm asking these questions as I don't know the answer, but why can't, could it be done live, so that?
Well, let's just talk about some of the restrictions we've put in here. If you do a live auction, and say whoever has the highest bid at the live auction has maybe back taxes, tax liens.
But it would only be with a butter, so that would be pre-vetted, that's two people, that's two people in this case. And they can just, they could live, bid it out, might even, not even be one of them, might not even.
We could, we could vet it in, in advance, knowing potentially they would be.
I mean, if you have an butters auction, you only know who the two people are, so you just check to see with the treasurer if the taxes are paid, and then otherwise, one of them might not even be interested, and then it's an auction, I mean, I, does anybody else not like that idea, or does, or is it not legal, or, I mean, I just?
It sounds like you're, you're complicating it more.
No, not really, I actually think we're simplifying it.
Yeah, well, okay, we can disagree on that, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't actually agree with that, I don't think that's the best way to go, I just don't know that there's parity between both parties. I also wanted to speak to you, talk, John, about a fiduciary responsibility as select board and the finances of the town. I also think there's an ethical and moral responsibility here that is worth mentioning. We bought the land for $1 with the full intention of trying to do something to improve the erosion on the property. In spite of thousands of dollars that went into it, it actually is worse than it was when the, when the attempt was done. I think there's an ethical obligation here, too, that's, you know, supersedes some of the financial. We all know the history and involves, you know, people on the select board right now whose family ended up having to go into bankruptcy for doing something that was not deemed at the time illegal. And so I just feel like there's just a lot of unfortunate history here, and I, I think that we could do the right thing. And I don't think the do the right thing is try to get as much as we can from this piece of land, which is more of an asset than, more of a liability than an asset.
Yes.
Who was, who was chiming off here, is that one of us?
I think I, this is Chris, I think I got kicked out somehow, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave and try to come back in.
I, I don't, I don't disagree at all, and, you know, where the land ends up, I, I've got my own hopes on it, but again, I just want to make sure the process is, but I, I've lived this for 20 years, and people get dinged for stuff that you wouldn't believe, you know, so if you want to put $0 on it, you, we, that's where the vote goes, and that's fine. You know, I, I just have my opinion, and we all have ours, and three out of five votes sends it forward, that's all.
I, I'm inclined to go with Reenie, with what she said in terms of justification, looking backward and looking ahead.
Anybody else want to?
Oh, I think we have Cheryl Plager.
Cheryl, is that you? There you are.
Yeah, she's there.
Cheryl, you have your microphone muted?
It says she's connecting.
Okay.
Yeah, to audio, she's connected, Cheryl, your microphone is off.
You're muted, Cheryl.
Can you hear us now?
There you go.
So the biggest thing we wanted to clarify is, I'm, sorry, sorry if I'm the echo.
Yeah, you can't have two machines running at the same time.
Okay, sorry, I have to move away from the computer. So the biggest thing is that with regards to the value of the land, and so I guess I'm disappointed that we're still at this point talking about it, because there are very good sources such as Farm Bureau and USDA. They have it by, by county and by state and what APR values are. And I think a disservice that we did was not to take pictures of that land so that you folks could all see what that land is actually looked like. So there is no, this is absolutely correct, it is considered a gully, it is, it has absolutely no value. And so when we hear that, you know, the minimum bidding, and again, I'm not, we're not asking for any favors, obviously, I'm just stating fact that that land is so not worth the $2,500, it's not valued at the $2,500. And we're, we're concerned because we think that, we understand you want to do right by the town, right by the voters, but the town meeting was in February, and now we're talking about potentially not having even a bidding, a bidding packet until June, and it just keeps going and going and going. Did they lose?
Nope, we can see, I'll see you and hear you.
Okay, so that's, that's our biggest concern about, I think that there's a real misconception about what the value of that land is worth. You can't grow anything, you can't till it, that's the whole point, it's just worthless gully land. And so I think, you know, we should have done a slide presentation or something a long time ago to show what the value of that land is.
Cheryl, if I can ask a question, so my understanding from conversations is, you want that land so you could, I'm gonna use wrong words, but rehab it so you can stop all the erosion and everything, you want to prep the land and so it's not gonna keep eroding, correct? Because it erodes on your current property, right now.
Correct, the erosion is so severe that when we did the project two years ago for the erosion on our land, we talked to conservation, and we had NRCS and USDA and conservation, and we could only go so far because the town owned the other land. And so we made some corrective measures on our land, but that soil erosion, all you have to do is drive down 10, you can see some of the sinkholes are so severe right up front by Route 10 with underneath the highway goes. You know, it's almost, you're not gonna be able, even to do one tractor length, and you can all see, all you have to do is drive down 10 and look to the right. But once you get in there, I mean, it has to stop, it is having such a negative impact on our land, and those eight acres is where all the land, where all the water runoff, you know, accumulates, you know, logically speaking, the water runs downhill. And so, you know, when the erosion problems started well before we bought the farm, and we, we understand better than anything about why the tires were put there and why the, the soil erosion problem existed, and it is terrible. I mean, all you have to do is go down there and, and watch the water go over those eight acres. And, and our contention is that nobody watches it, nobody monitors it. MDR doesn't, Board of Health doesn't, you folks don't, and, and it's really clear that people don't understand what's going on, on that land. So, no disrespect, when there was mentioned a couple of meetings ago about it's almost growing season, we kind of chuckled because you can't grow anything in there. So you folks need to do what you need to do, but we're really disappointed that, that we're still so many months out, and there are so many ways to get good information. All you had to do was call Farm Bureau or USDA and get some of these folks, and to hear, you know, that you don't remember, or you don't have in your record what MDR said as what the value of the property is, I just don't think, I, I understand in the COVID thing right now, it's not a priority, but it's really disappointing for us, because we do sit on these meetings, and we do hear, and we keep our mouth shut because we want to appear impartial, and we understand the objective. But I just don't think that anybody is, is really researching, and when Bob and I tried to put the meeting together last spring with MDR and bring all the parties together, Francine was there, we were really trying hard to not have this turn into what it's turned into. And to, just to go meeting after meeting after meeting saying, "Well, let's do this," or "Let's try this," it's really, really disappointing. So that's, that's all we wanted to say, we, we didn't want to speak at the last one, I just really feel like it's not going anywhere. And Reenie was right at the last meeting when she mentioned that we did lose this grant season. We have applied for more assistance to help us with some engineers on the erosion problem on our land. And, and she's right, we are very concerned what's gonna happen on the top of the hill, because water goes one way, and something's gotta get done there. So that's all, thanks for listening.
Cheryl, from my standpoint, the, you know, the MDR amount, the town assessed amount, the reason why it, you know, from my standpoint, it didn't mean much to me, because I know that the value of the land isn't what it's assessed at or what MDR says, so the specific amount there was immaterial to me.
Well, thanks.
So, so just out of curiosity, how did MDR come up with a value like that, then, if it's, did they actually come out and see it? Or did they just look on the paper and say?
They were here, they, they have been here numerous times, they were here two years ago when we were working on the soil erosion problem on our end. They were here last February when we had the meeting at Town Hall. They know the land well, and they know, they know the poor condition it's in. And so they have to put, you know, short of saying that it's zero value, I, I know that they disagreed with what it was assessed at. And I think the discussion was, you know, realistically, you know, we had heard $200 an acre, and whether that's what they gave you or not, I don't know. But there is a way, you know, they gave you folks a number, so there's gotta be somewhere, some, in some sort of documentation, what the estimate, what MDR gave you was the value of the land. And if you don't have it, or you don't remember, call them, or send Ashley an email and ask them.
Well, that's, that's reasonable.
Well, the other thing is, like I said, the town of Southampton bought the land for $1, so for me, I, you know, I don't think it, to me, it doesn't matter, frankly, it doesn't matter.
And I think that's why the Board of Health was arguing that the land is in worse shape than it was in before. And, you know, we can take a tour down there if you want, bring your boots, that it, it's worse, you know, it has no value. That it, it's worse land, you know, it, it has no value. So and our, you know, our argument has always been that MDR and the town had responsibility of this. And no one's doing anything. And that's why for the last couple of years, we've really been squawking about this because I don't want the kids to end up having to correct this problem. And all you have to do is drive down 10 and you can see the washouts in the sinkholes. It's really bad. So the, I can't help you with the process because obviously, you know, we have a vested interest in what happens. I just, we were really frustrated because we were trying to get on and we couldn't. And, um, so I, I apologize for the technical difficulties, but I, I just really felt like we needed to speak up.
Well, thanks very much for, um, getting the video and joining us.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, what, what else you want to talk about? We talked about having the draft of the bid. We talked about some exclusions. Matt raised the question about having a Butters, a sort of auction. What do you want to do?
Whatever the easiest process is. And the quickest.
Okay.
For me, easiest and quickest.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is take the existing bid. Anybody who has any edits or any, this is just a couple of things, like one place it said Board of Selectmen. There was a couple of typos. I'll send you my copy back. I like what's there. I would just, you know, have a no minimum bid would be my preference if people agree with that. And then, um, there's another issue that I think is worth mentioning and that is something to do the fact with that, um, that there would be an intention to improve the land and that there wouldn't be any, whoever had a vested interest in the land, uh, would be interested in improving it in some way and/or not have current Board of Health sort of violations or something on their property or something like that. I mean, I just would want to know that, um, someone's interest in the land would be to improve it.
I do believe at that meeting, there was some discussion about, and we're going back a year and a half, two years. It was a long time. But there was discussion about mitigating this, the conditions. And that was why, um, I know that they were looking for a grant to try to help resolve the situation. Correct, Cheryl?
Yep, that's right.
And that had to be one of the conditions.
Well, can we put that in there?
Sure.
How did, how would that look? Like, how do you enforce that? Because this is all just an idea.
Well, I think would, one of the requirements would be, you know, to have a statement of purpose.
Well, for sure, however you put the attached documents too. You have, you, don't forget those easements because those easements are permanent to the land, so.
Back on one of John's questions earlier on about, um, being in, um, in good standing on the taxes and so forth. I think that was part of your question, John, early on. Ed, you've got a form in here for tax compliance as one of the appendices. Does that not answer that question?
No, that, that is usually to your income taxes and your state taxes and all that stuff, not the local real estate tax.
Well, what do you think? Can we, can we request that all the Xs be filled in with actual location of the land and various assessors' maps and remove the section that says Gun Road frontage? And remove the minimum bid and, um, present, uh, as close to a final version of this for next select board meeting?
You know, that's, that's like two weeks away. Can we go back and forth with Ed with our suggestions and thoughts? Get it finalized. If we can get it finalized in the next week or less, let's have a special meeting. There are Zoom meetings. It'll take 15 minutes to look at it and get going. To Cheryl's point, we've been sitting on this for forever.
And if someone gives me the contact information of the people who represented MDR at the meeting, if we could get a summary of that meeting from them, that would also be useful for us.
Yeah, I mean.
I'll be happy to do the outreach and see what it is that I can get.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I, I still think there should be a minimum, especially since MDR came up with a price. But, you know, again, it's, it's up to the whole board. If, if nobody else wants to do it, then I'm just one person. Because to me, that's the process that in my professional career that I've been shown to, to do it the proper way. So I've got to stick by, by that.
Is that a way to go?
Are people comfortable with adding something about a statement of purpose in terms of the land? That, that be part of the bid so that the intention of securing grants to fix the problem and that sort of thing?
Yeah, but not just a state, it might as well, it might as well, at this point, it might as well be in the form of like a business plan, really. I mean, you know, I mean, may have it be concrete, like it, it, anybody can submit a letter for this. I mean, you know, specifically speaking to the Fletchers, they've done a ton of work on this. If they just, I mean, they have a plan. It's a legitimate plan. Like, I, I feel like it, just stating that you're going to do something with it doesn't, it just, that just makes it just a easy hoop to jump through. I think you got to make it harder to jump through that hoop. So I, I would be in favor of making it a hard hoop to jump through.
What, what do you mean? Have a business plan submitted with, uh, with some?
Yeah, you've already looked at this. Like, I mean, I, I think the Fletchers already have their, you know, with regard to the Fletchers, I think they already, they've already looked into the grants. They already have all the grants listed out. They already have a plan ready to file for all of this. Like, they, I mean, I can't imagine that anybody else has that. So if you make it, if you have to have some type of a detail, like I'm calling it a business plan because that's my world that I live in, but whatever the, whatever the term would be for this, like a very specific outlined agenda, not saying that you have to follow it line by line, but at least that it's a well thought out plan, not just a couple of quick sentences saying, I intend to improve the land and fix the drainage issues.
I would almost say that because I, I don't want to put anybody through any more hoops. A business plan is fine, but unless part of the sale of the property hinges on somebody going through with a business plan, if they don't, you pull the land back, there's no real teeth. So I make somebody go through that.
No, I'm just trying to, yeah.
It's not contingent upon somebody keeping the land. So I don't want to make somebody do more work than necessary.
Okay, do we need a motion to move this forward?
I moved it. We advance the bidding sale process and try to expedite it. And that, as John suggested, recommendations made directly to Ed to formulate that, that document, which incorporates everything that was said here tonight, if people submitted.
Okay, but I think there's a little bit of a variance in what people said here tonight. So, uh, I think what we agreed on is the language of the draft for the most part with the removal of the statement relative to Gun Road. Add the piece that says about, um, the tax, that up to date on taxes. And obviously we fill in the assessor's information in terms of the location and details of the land. And that.
You removed the minimum bid, right? Was that part of it?
That was my proposal, that there'd be no minimum bid, but there's also the question of whether or not there needs to be some type of statement of purpose as part of the bid. I think, I don't know if there's anything else, but those are the issues I think we talked about. Do you want to make a motion that addresses those issues, Francine?
Yes, I, I was going by, people were going to individually submit, but yes, I, that, that kind of summarizes everything that was said.
So your motion supports no minimum bid and a statement of purpose?
A statement of purpose, yes.
All right. Does anybody want to second that? Is there anything else you want to add to that?
Okay.
Would someone like to make a different motion?
No.
I mean, the only thing I disagree with is there's no reasonable minimum in there. If you put that in, I'd be okay, but if not.
I'd go back to the thought that we've put in enough of the other kinds of conditions that make it somewhat of a high hurdle for anyone else to try and, try and bid on this, that this would alleviate the need for a minimum bid.
You know, Chris, I, I gotta say, when you say stuff like put high hurdles in there, to me, that is, it borders unquestionable on whether we could say stuff like that from a, you know, ethical point of view. So I don't want to, us to get in problem with wording on this. This is all on tape. So we got to be careful.
Understood.
Matt or Francine, do you want to make another motion?
I mean, if, if you find out what MDR is, and I think we talked somewhere between eight and 14,000. I have no idea what that is. I would support something that says we, we would put a minimum of 10% of what the MDR is. That would probably significantly lower what the minimum bid would be. There'd still be a minimum, so there'd still be a, a threshold that somebody has to meet.
Right.
I would be fine with making a motion that ties into that.
Yes, given, given the, given the use value of the property or non-use value of the property.
Right.
Yeah. And, and I said I would be willing, if I get the contact information of those individuals and follow up. And that was, that was my recollection was that ballpark number. And I think 10% makes it very reasonable.
And I ask you both.
I know, I don't want to, I don't want to postpone. My personal opinion is I don't want to postpone this anymore. So whether $0 or $800 or $1,000, like it, it's all the same. I mean, I hate to be so simplistic here, but it's all the same to me. And, I mean, if, if people are fine with doing a no minimum bid, then no minimum bid. I mean, I don't know why we need to punt this another two weeks.
Well, Francine has a, uh, a recommendation and she didn't get a second on that with no minimum. So I guess that's why I was bringing up the alternate, which would tie something to MDR, which seems to be, you know, a, a reasonable benchmark rather than the assessor's office, which is quite high.
So is, is the, does the motion include a no, a no minimum? Does the motion that Francine did include no minimum or is there a minimum?
I, I said no minimum.
All right, then I'll second.
I said remove that.
I'll second that with the edits that Rini, uh, clearly outlined and bulleted.
Anybody else want clarification on those, those points or are we all good with them?
I'm good.
Is there any additional questions?
Can we just go over the timeline just quickly? Again, you're going to put it out there. We're going to have how many days to respond when we make a decision? Does any of that change from the document you sent that in?
I think Ed originally said three weeks.
I would recommend three weeks.
Okay.
And that would just fall onto when the closest select board meeting is.
Okay.
The only other point I want to make is that I just, I just don't understand entirely. Again, I keep coming back to the fact that this town bought this land for a dollar. And under ordinary circumstances, I think it would be our obligation to be able to, you know, on behalf of the voters of the town to actually get as much as we can for the land, frankly. But given the circumstances and the history and the ethics of the situation, I guess I find it really hard to believe that we're, you know, to me, I think it does matter, you know, as far as the minimum bid. So to say, you know, you know, 1,000, 2,000, 14, assessed value, MDR, that's why it doesn't matter to me. To me, it just seems like we bought the land for a dollar with the intention of fixing the problem. We didn't fix the problem. We made it worse. So now we're trying to return it to somebody who might be able to fix the problem. So I'm just really confused as to what the objection is, frankly. So I know we have a motion to second the table. I just wanted to make that comment.
Well, I just, well, to that comment, can I just ask the following question? I mean, we acquired the land for a dollar. We invested all of the money in it to fix a specific problem, but just correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't know that, I don't know the exact history, but the problem was not to correct the erosion. It was to correct the fact that there were thousands of tires in there and to pull tires out. Is that, is, am I incorrect or?
Partially incorrect. The tires were in there to prevent erosion problem. The tires were approved as an erosion control measure by the town, by the Board of Selectmen, by the commission, the Conservation Commission at the time, back in the 1990s and late 1980s, to put in tires as a viable solution to stabilize the banks and stop the erosion or slow it down because the town and the state were unable to do anything with the culverts under Route 10, which is where all the water was flowing from.
Okay, and so the tires were put in and then somebody came in and said that they were an environmental hazard and that's why we had to pull them out?
The Board of Health then turned around and said they were an environmental hazard and we had to pull them out.
Chris is correct.
Wasn't there more tires brought in and that was originally approved and that's why they had them pulled out?
No, it's not even worth going into that history. All the, there's various news articles. Many tires got inflated in terms of the, every, every time the story got repeated, the, the volume and the number of things got, you know, multiplied by double and triple.
So thank, thank you for that, Chris. And, but the, was the cleanup supposed to also solve the erosion problem by, by definition of the cleanup?
Probably those that were around at the time that that happened, maybe Bob and Cheryl would know that better. My understanding was the Board of Health came to my mom and offered the dollar so that the town could apply for a grant to get the money to try and fix the problem. And that included, from that point of time, trying to take out some tires and stabilize the banks.
And the erosion. So it was a dual, it was a dual approach. Get rid of the.
My understanding, and a lot of the tires, most all the tires, many of them anyway, I got, I think there's still some there, but most of the tires were taken out. And there were some plantings done, but the plantings never held the banks. And the erosion is worse now than it was when my father farmed it.
Okay, understood. I appreciate that.
And the money that the town got was actually not from the operating budget. It was grant money, which is the whole intention of switching it over. But I also wanted to say that there is still money, I believe, in the Board of Health budget from the leftover of that.
There, there is. And if I can clarify, and I'm not going to vote on this. I, I think I probably said more than I should. But I do want to sort of stand up for the family on this one, just because of the history. We ended up, after many thousands of dollars of legal fees, environmental studies, engineering fees, to try and come up with all sorts of designs to solve this problem, it ended up being absolutely beyond control and my folks had to declare bankruptcy. So when this farm was sold, the money from the bankruptcy went to the town. The town got about $155,000 from the sale of this farm. Plus, they gave us a dollar when they bought the gully back. So add the 155 to the $600,000 grant. And that's how much the town has had access to, to try and solve the problem over the last 25 years.
And I think at the, one of the most recent meetings, when we were looking at the budget, for the first time, I actually noticed or saw that there was a balance remaining in the Board of Health budget. I don't think it's part of the operating budget, so I don't think it was always shown. But right now there are funds and I don't know what purpose they are or what they could be used for. Do you know, Ed?
No, it's, it does sit in a fund. It's separate from their budget. I don't know if there are any restrictions under that particular fund.
But at, at one point in time, we were told that the money would come back to the, to the Fowles family when the money was, there was money left from trying to clean it up from our, our bankruptcy money. there was money left from trying to clean it up from our bankruptcy money, from the farm sale, that that money would come back to the farm. It never did.
Yeah. And I know when I was in the Board of Health, there was a request from the family to get an accounting balance. And there was, it was not, there was an inability to account for the amount of spending that had happened. I'm not saying there was anything done wrong. I just think that from an accounting purpose, there was not the information available to us that I would have wanted. So Ed, it would be helpful if you could just find out, just in terms of any potential, you know, fees that we may incorporate. Would you be able to find out the remaining balance of this fund and how it can be used?
Yes, I'm just, I'm looking right now to see if I can find out what the balance is.
You know, 17 sticks in my head, but I don't know. Okay, so we have a motion, we second.
But I'll find out either way.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of moving this bid to a final format or whatever, with the changes that we suggested? Can you just roll call vote, please?
Francine, you're muted, but roll in the eye.
Tishman eye.
Martin, no.
Fowles upstate.
Okay, so Ed, if you could just, anybody has any edits or suggestions that aren't substantial in terms of content, if you could just forward them along to Ed? And then Ed, if you want to just let us know when, if we wanted to have an extra meeting, if you could just let us know, or whether it'll end up having to be. Is this something that should be reviewed by KP, or are we fine to just move it along?
We're fine just to move it along.
Okay, so will you let us know then when the version is done to present to us?
Sure.
Okay. Thanks a lot, everybody. The next item on the agenda is the open space and recreation plan update.
Yes, and I spoke to Ken Comier from PVPC, and he's gonna give me some dates of availability. We're gonna start doing a Zoom meeting with them and the open space meeting, open space update committee and start moving it forward this way.
I guess my question was, could we have the person who originally initiated this effort? That was Emily Slotnick from PVPC, you know, pick this up at this point in time and move it forward with us? As opposed to bringing Ken in, who's not been involved up to now?
She's off on other assignments, so I would guess that that'll delay us even further.
Could we ask?
We can ask.
Okay.
Remind me, we had the MVP grant that was actually, Fosse and O'Neill had actually written that, and we worked in a certain funding amount. Was it 7,000?
Yes, we worked in $7,000 of that to complete the open space and recreation plan update.
Okay, so the next step is to have a meeting of just the open space or to have a combined meeting with open space review committee?
The open space and recreation plan update committee.
Okay, so, and that would be with Ken? I know. Okay, well, we talked about it last time, when PVPC was, had some money with the Master Plan Committee. The money that is there disappears very quickly. And it doesn't take too many meetings involving PVPC before the money is gone. So can I just ask Francine and Chris and anybody else who's been involved in this? I believe that we're members of the committee that were working on certain sections of the open space plan. Do you think that bringing in Ken or Emily at this particular point is the right thing to do, just in terms of the amount of money available? I mean, $7,000, not very much. I forget how much we got from the grant that was written through planning. It wasn't very much, and the money disappeared almost instantly.
I don't disagree with you that we can't do, you know, some of the background work for this. We're talking about, you know, the leadership portion of it, if we can get it using those people with that background to help drive this thing.
Yeah, I haven't been involved in the open space update.
Okay.
Plan part.
Okay. I just don't want Ken to, you know, I mean, I just don't want to spend an entire meeting getting Ken caught up on what's been done so far and costing us $2,000 out of $7,000.
That's why I was asking, could we have the original person back, then we could just keep moving forward? Instead of, as you're saying, using very limited funds to to bring this up, bring him up to speed. Nothing against Ken, it's just he wasn't there.
Well, we'll use Ken or whoever very miserly. And, you know, we could have a meeting that's an hour and a half or two, and maybe we'll just have Ken or someone there for an hour.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. So y'all send out a Zoom request and have a meeting planned in the next couple of weeks?
Yes, either next week or the beginning of the following week.
All right, that sounds great. Anything else on the open space and recreation plan? All right, so let's move into the last item on old business, which is Glendale Road project update.
And the preliminary work has all been done out there as far as readying the structures to get them ready for the final coat of asphalt. And now we're just waiting for the pavement contractor, who is Palmer. Currently, they are not up to full speed as far as their operation goes, because of this COVID-19 outbreak. So Gilaher expects that they probably will be able to address these larger projects probably either the first or second week in May. And once that they do start, it should be about a two-week period from start to finish. But everything that is left out there now basically requires some type of asphalt or pavement work.
Okay, and did the issue with the driveway to one of the barns there get worked out?
Yes, it did. That would be addressed when the paver comes in.
Okay. Any questions about Glendale Road?
Yeah, and there's a couple of other ones that are hanging out there, a couple of driveway curb cups that have to be, you know, widened or addressed. And there are some areas in the sidewalk that need repairing, but it's all asphalt, so they would do that all at once.
Okay. And there aren't any concerns about the temporary easements and dates and things with it being prolonged?
We still should be okay, because actually, they were supposed to finish this during this calendar year anyway.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about Glendale? All right, then we'll move into new business. And is it okay with everybody if we jump to the school issue, Southampton Local Norris Elementary School update? We have some people on the line that have been very patient. Is it okay if we jump to there?
Sure.
Fine.
Okay, so everybody got the email from John relative to the last very important vote of the local school committee, and relative to the percentages for the vote with the union? Who would like to start the discussion? Would you like to, John?
Talking to John Lumbrook, correct?
Yes. Or anybody, it's a matter, whoever's, we've got a number of people that have, you know, that.
I'll weigh in here. I'm just unclear as to what you're asking for. I just got to know this last night about this meeting. So what is it you're looking for, Maureen?
So Bobby, do you have video capability?
I do.
Okay, because our current policy, although we violated it tonight already with Aaron, is.
Oh, sorry, my video's on now. I apologize. I turned it off for better reception.
It occurred to me after John had made that comment. So our agreement is that in order to verify people, we have to have video in order to have them be part of the meeting. So, no, the agenda item is to discuss the most recent vote that was taken by the Southampton School Committee relative to the union. And so I just wanted to see who would like to begin the discussion.
So you're talking relative to the Union 66 or the budget?
The Union 66 vote, and the agenda item is Southampton Local Norris Elementary School update. So I would entertain an update on budget as well as the union. But I wanted to start with the discussion about the vote, if, just a report of the vote and how that came about and what the implications are now and so forth. So John, would you like to speak, or would Matt?
Sure, I can touch on that. And then if you want to also go into the budget issues. But the, John Lover 95, Glendale Road, School Committee Chair for Norris. Last committee meeting, the committee took a vote after several months of discussion to separate itself from Union 66, which was a superintendentcy union comprised of Williamsburg, West Hampton, and Southampton. That union represented Southampton in the oversight of Central Office of the Regional, had 33% of the vote, so Southampton broke out to be 11% of the vote weighted. It's also made up of Hampshire Regional, which Southampton has a percentage of that vote based on its population, and then Chesterfield-Goshen, each one of them having 33%. The Southampton School Committee opted to exit itself from that after getting a legal opinion from its own counsel that we could and still have a shared agreement or an MOU, as the select board would probably be more familiar with, to cover the cost of the Central Office. And by doing so right now, barring any action by Williamsburg or West Hampton to separate themselves, Southampton now has 25, its vote on the hiring of the superintendent, the business manager, and/or the director of special education, which our school committee positions, has 25% of that weighted vote versus 11%. When you look at the totality of it, based on last October, Southampton makes up 53 and a half percent of the total student population of the entire system. It's a first step for the Southampton School Committee, for Norris's School Committee. We will be discussing it further tomorrow night in our public meeting on what the next steps may or may not be for us to do. I wrote the communication, I sent it out to the select board, I also sent it to all the surrounding chairs of the school committees impacted by it, to let them know I can take any questions or you might have.
If you guys saw the memo, the memo is, you know, John, thanks for the memo. And in summary, the memo is really well-written, so if you don't understand the numbers on this and the percentages and why it all shakes out like that, just take a look at the memo that he sent out to all of us like last week. It makes it easy to understand. It's otherwise something pretty complicated to understand if you're just speaking about it.
I appreciate, John, your prompt notification to everybody right after the vote so that it wasn't sort of distorted or coming in sideways. So I just want to say how much I appreciate that. Can I ask, has this been, this agreement been enforced, the percentages and such, since the beginning of the district? Like, has it been for as long as, you know, the Hampshire Regional District has been formed?
My gut says yes. Part of the issue is, is nobody can find any written document that pertains to Union 66 other than the fact that we are listed on the DESI website as a sanctioned Union 66. So I believe Union 66 was together on or about the same time as the region was incorporated in 1966.
Anybody have any other questions about the decision by the local school committee? I have a couple of questions. Have you heard anything from Williamsburg or West Hampton? And does this affect teacher contracts or anything else relative to the, I mean, what are the implications, immediate implications?
So on your first part, no. The Southampton School Committee has not received any official or unofficial communications from either Williamsburg or West Hampton. We did receive a response from the Chair of Hampshire Regional School Committee that was shared with everybody. That was neutral, just offered feedback on it. As far as potential impact, Southampton would still be, any contracts that were signed prior to the vote would still be in force based on the split ratios and cost sharing that were in place prior to the vote. Going forward, on new contracts, I believe, at least on the legal opinion that we have, the Southampton School Committee has, would now be governed by four parties versus three parties, and Southampton would represent itself at the table.
Can I just weigh in for a sec? Just so you know that.
Can you just say your name and where you live?
Yeah, Bobby Jones, Business Administrator, Hampshire Regional School District, West Hampton, Mass. So I just want to say that I know that a part of this whole issue is my contract. And that remains to be seen. My contract ends June 30th. And I'm not really clear as to what is going on with that. I mean, I have Aaron and John have weighed in a little bit about that, but I'm not sure how that will come out in the end, so I do have some concerns there.
Could I ask another question? You had said the superintendent, the business manager, and the special education director. Does it also involve the Director of IT?
No.
No.
Well, Director of IT is strictly under the governance of the superintendent. The, Aaron Osborne can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe there are four positions that the school committee still has jurisdiction over. It's the superintendent, the business manager, the director of special education, and the school physician. Other than that, it all falls to superintendent.
Okay.
Yep.
And as far as, other than the superintendent, it's the superintendent's recommendation to us for those other two positions or three positions. And the school committee is not allowed to withhold its approval unless it can substantiate valid reasons. So, you know, basically, the superintendent makes his recommendation or her recommendation, and it comes up to the school committee to ratify, so to speak.
So the recommendation on the contracts?
On who is the director of special education, when that contract ends, that one is up next year. And as Bobby said, hers is up right now. You know, it's been, there's hopefully a solution in place. For the record, I'm not speaking for the committee, but as a member, you know, I want to retain Bobby's services. So I don't want this bump in the road to be an issue. But I think the timing of it, of the storm here, so to speak, is that Southampton needed to take the first step to separate itself out, to put itself on more former ground for the purposes of representing the community as a whole.
And when this vote was taken, and we, instead of being a third of the district of three, with only 11%, we automatically created a new entity, does that automatically revert everybody else to 25%?
It creates four groups. It, it, it creates four groups. The four groups go to twenty-five that meet, but one group is made up of West Hampton and Williamsburg, which are now twelve and a half. So if Williamsburg and West, Williamsburg or Southampton opted to separate out, we would then be five groups at twenty percent.
Okay.
An equal percentage unless we negotiate something different.
Okay, thanks. John, do you have a question?
No.
Martin, I mean, okay. Any other questions regarding the recent, um, union vote?
And then, and just Maureen, if I would just add that, the other thing and why Bobby and Aaron are on tonight and, and Eliza Pluta is that I know you received the budget from, from the school, so I don't know if, since they're on, if it makes sense to let them give you a rundown of the highlights, if you have a few minutes or?
I'd love to hear, uh, how do ever, anybody else feel?
Yeah, I would appreciate that we received it and I'd like to hear from them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So I mean, I don't know if Bobby wants to start or if you want me to start.
So-
Happy to. What would, what would people like to do, Bobby, would you like to take the lead or do you want me to?
Well, I would just give an overview as I know it.
Go ahead.
Um, so the budget really just contains, um, as we said, a two percent overall between the regular budget and the transportation budget. So we lost, um, a lot of expenses in the transportation, um, budget due to, um, out of district students or that had moved out that we don't have to transport anymore. Um, and then, so between the two, the regular operating budget and the transportation budget, um, we came to a two percent increase in the overall, it's netted out. So our, um, regular operating budget, and I have to pull that up, give me a minute, I'll put the glasses on. Um, came to a three point three two percent increase, but then there was a decrease in the, um, transportation budget which netted out to a two percent increase.
And this is going from twenty to twenty-one, is that right?
This is right, correct, yes. All right, and then, so the only change is really, other than contractual or, um, you know, regular raises for anybody going on is there was a part-time math interventionist, there's two of them, part-time.
I can, I can run down that list if you want, Bobby.
Yeah, if you want to.
Okay, okay, so included in that increase are, like Bobby had just mentioned, um, two part-time math interventionists that would not be contractual employees as part of the teacher's contract, but they would be only contracted for a hundred and sixty-five days, so they're only at school when needed. Um, and that would be an, uh, between the two of them, they'd only work nine to twelve. One would be for K to three and one would be for, uh, fourth, fourth, fifth and sixth grade. So it'd be an increase of thirty-four thousand six fifty. This also includes an increase of eighteen thousand dollars to the curriculum line for, um, for reading curriculum, last year we had, we had money in the budget already, um, at twenty-two thousand, I think, that we use for math books. So we would increase it eighteen thousand in order to buy a reading curriculum for students in grades K through four. Um, we would increase, at this time we have two preschool, um, classes, but they don't run simultaneously. They are staggered and they are, uh, different. So one teacher works, say, three afternoons and four mornings and the other one works four afternoons and four mornings. We're going to make them both work four mornings, four afternoons to have classes at the same time. Um, and each ha- half day, so each teacher would have two half-day classes a day for four days. And then Friday, Friday mornings, they would have their prep time and their planning time and their meeting time. So that means that one teacher would increase from point eight, four days a week, to a point nine. Um, and one para professional would go from, uh, point eight to point nine. So that total increase there is about nine thousand dollars. I think it's seven thousand one fifty-seven for the teacher and two thousand seven twenty-six for the para. And then increasing one of the custodial positions to full-time, it's a halftime position now, which would give us three and a half custodians instead of three full-time custodians. And that would be an increase of seventeen thousand dollars. And then adding a part-time, uh, behavioral interventionist in the lower grades, especially preschool kindergarten. Uh, we're seeing kiddos in preschool with many different needs, um, from early intervention that we just are not able to handle with the, with the faculty that we have now. So this would just be a part-time position and that would be thirty thousand six ninety-eight. And that, and that's, that's everything, um, to make the school whole, uh, to, to have what we need. I mean, now that we're out of school now and teaching remotely, I can imagine that, you know, we're trying the best that we can to keep kids not regret, to, to have kids not regress at this time, but with our math scores anyway, the last few years, and we just got a new math program. I was already looking to get math interventionists and I can just see that it's going to be, you know, really, um, um, a, a real good reason to have those math interventionists starting in September, in order to move to a tiered instructional system for students. So as you can imagine, when they come back in the fall, we're going to have to assess them some way, a formative assessment, not like a major state test, but some sort of assessments to see where they are and, and then try to target those students, um, and, and get them back up to speed. So those part-time math interventionists, and we already have two reading teachers on staff. So they are going to be utilized in that way as well to try to hit all kids at where they are and move them forward. Do you have any questions?
I just have, have one, this is Chris, um, I missed the part you said about the, the custodial going from three to three and a half and why that's necessary and especially now with, with the school being closed down. Are you having some savings there that can be applied to some of your other budget items or?
Um, Bobby, I don't know if you could speak to this, you know, we, I, I think at first we thought maybe we'd have some savings because this school was shut down. But then when you think about the contracts and paying everybody who's out of work right now, um, and, and not taking in, I don't know if we talked about this at the very beginning before Bobby was here, um, not getting, um, cafeteria right now to pay, well, the cafeteria monitors are being paid, but we're not selling any lunches. So there's a deficit there. Um, and also, what was the other thing, Bobby, I don't remember where else there's a deficit?
Uh, that's pre-K, so we have a pre-K revolving account that pays some of our teachers.
Right.
All of those teachers are on contract, this is one of those things you, you don't expect. But we can't realistically take payment from families whose kids aren't able to actually come in to tend, so, um, you know, it's, it's one of those, those items we're taking a loss. So we're really hoping that our, our losses, um, and our savings end up equalling out at, at best.
So-
That's where we're sitting right now.
Uh, to answer your question, Chris, about the custodians, uh, back in two thousand fourteen, when I was first hired, the, when the budget was passed before I got hired, but the budget that I inherited when I got there, um, it was a cut of a custodial position, I'm just trying to get half back. And, and, you know, with, with the way the seasons go and the flu and everything and only having, um, three right now, it's not enough to cover the building with this, you know, someone is vomiting down in the kindergarten wing and then you need someone in the cafeteria because it's lunchtime and, you know, it just feels like we're not covering all the bases and keeping the building as clean as we can.
We are also going to have to increase our cleaning after this.
I was going to say that, whatever, whatever you do, whatever you do, get back to reality. I mean, the amount of disinfecting and thinning that you'll have to do, I'm sure is going to really, really increase, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, thank you very much, what other questions, um, does anyone have? I wanted to ask a question that I had asked, but since the three of you are here, I'm happy to, um, I'm wondering if, I guess my big worry is the kids that have, uh, five oh fours as a special ed and I'm just wondering, I was told, I think Matt had said that, you know, knowing how well you're doing the best you can with, uh, remote learning and putting packets together and deliveries to kids that, that it's, um, you know, it's being addressed. But I'm just, uh, my worry is with the kids that are, you know, y- used to having a structure in school and special ed and I'm just wondering how that's going.
Right, so, um, the guidance from the Department of Ed and especially the special ed department has been, um, by May fifth, every parent has to receive a remote learning plan for special ed students. So we went over every single IEP and the teachers created a learning plan for every student on an IEP based on their goals on the IEP, just so it shows the parent what I'm working on right now while you're remotely with your child and what I'm offering you right now while we're out of school. We can't give everybody a hundred percent of the services that they were receiving in school, outside of school. Um, so we're doing our due diligence to do at least fifty percent of that. Um, you know, we know that we're, it's, it's not going to be perfect, but at least parents will have a concrete plan from the teacher of what they are willing to do while the students are out of school to try to keep them from falling behind. Yeah.
Yeah, I just have a-
Does Bobby have a question?
I, I was just going to weigh in and say that that's one of the issues for FY twenty-one, um, that we're concerned about is the compensatory services that these kiddos might need. Um, with the lack of circuit breaker monies that, you know, we might have potentially gotten, um, will get them for out-of-district, uh, students, but in-district students it will be reduced. So there's costs associated with that and I think we're all trying to figure out what those summer school services will look like. But it remains to be seen and we're all flying by the seat of our pants, so to speak, I hate to say that, but.
Right, it's like a moving target right now. Are we going to be open for summer school or not open for summer school? Are we going to be working remotely? Um, the other thing I wanted to say is, um, you know, the teachers have, have learned so much over the last, you know, six weeks has it been? And willing to do whatever it takes in order to teach the kiddos, but at the same time, afraid of the privacy policies on Zoom and, and things like that. So at first they were a little concerned about teaching one-on-one with a student who might have a, have an IEP and whether it was okay to even have a, two students on IEPs in a small group on Zoom because of privacy issues where one parent now knows that that other kiddo must be special ed if my kiddo's special ed in this group. Um, but I think that we've kind of hashed that all out and we're doing whatever it takes and doing it because we have to do it. I mean, because we, not just because we have to do it, because we want to do it, because the teachers want to make sure that the kids are not regressing and getting permission from parents and things like that to be in Zooms together. And we actually have some really cool stuff going on with, um, some of the older kids are being role models to the younger kids on a Zoom meeting. You know, a older fifth grader is reading to a second grader and Mrs. Burke does her Friday, um, read alouds with the fifth grader, reading buddies with the kindergarteners and she's still doing that on Zoom. So it's, you know, we're trying to maintain consistency as much as we can, but using a platform like this. So it's been, you know, teachers are being really creative. I was on a Zoom today with a kindergarten class, I said to the teachers, you need to start inviting me to these Zooms because I miss the kids too. So when I popped on today, one of the little kids is like, teacher said, we have a special guest today. One of the kids yells, Mrs. Pluta! And I was, oh my God, I started crying. And, um, they were, they have a camera on one of the, another kindergarten teacher's house watching chicks that are going to hatch, because that's what they do in kindergarten every year is they hatch chicks. So the kids are talking about the chicks, observing the chicks, writing about the chicks. We did the chicken dance today on Zoom, um, it was really great and they learned about the different, um, stages of the egg and everything. So, you know, I was sitting there on the Zoom trying to pay attention, but at the same time, my mind kept wandering and saying to myself, you know, this isn't perfect, but wow, these kids are getting a lot, it's great, you know, and how, um, you know, my superintendent had me on a Zoom for the first time, I've never done a Zoom before. And then I expected my teachers to be on a Zoom with me in order to have a meeting. And then the teachers in turn turned that around and they're Zooming with the kids. And we've all learned so much over the last six weeks and the teacher was sharing her screen and popping up a video and reading aloud and just, you know, it was like right in the middle of the classroom as usual, it was really great, so.
I wanted to just ask a question about when school is operating normally, you had instituted a new program, the language-based learning classroom?
Yep.
How did that, how was that going before this disruption?
Great, it was going so good. Um, we have a phenomenal teacher that we hired and she's just doing a really good job. And there have been a couple, you know, contentious meetings where we thought student parents were going to want the child to go out to a, uh, out-of-district placement and, you know, this is the whole reason why we, we set this up and
Right.
He was just able to put in some really good, um, curriculum strategies that we weren't able to do before and it prevented those children from going out and parents are super happy.
Okay, that, that was the intention and hopefully we can, we can start to get some kids choicing in, good.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
Good.
Aaron, did you want to say something?
No, that's okay, I, I think Eliza got it.
All right, any other questions about anything relative to the local or regional budget or programs?
I would say it's just good to see the teachers pitching in, going on the parades and celebrating and all that, going at extra effort. So I think it really makes the kids happy, so thank you everybody from the board.
Yep, well, thank you and we're, we're doing another video, so stay tuned.
Uh, do you have something you want to say, Bobby?
I just wanted to give kudos to Eliza and all the teachers and paras, they are doing such an awesome job. Um, I don't know how they're doing it, to be honest with you, they're doing great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all very much for coming too, I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Thanks.
Okay, I guess we can move on then to the, um, COVID update.
All right. And as you know, earlier today, the governor's office announced that they're going to extend the stay-at-home and non-essential business closures through May eighteenth. Uh, there are no guarantees that everything will magically open up, uh, on the nineteenth. Number one, uh, they have put together a advisory group of seventeen members. Uh, eleven of those members are industry members and industry leaders. Three are, uh, have municipal backgrounds, one of those three municipal leaders happens to be Mayor LaChapelle from East Hampton. So we do have some local representation, uh, on there. And then there are three members on that committee from, uh, public health. And what they are going to be doing over the, the next couple of weeks is taking a look at and making the recommendations of, uh, what would a safe working place look like, uh, once the stay-at-home, uh, order and non-essential business, uh, is, uh, closures are either relaxed or removed. Uh, you know, what would social distancing look like in those workplaces? Uh, would they need some type of barriers for protection? What type of sanitation would, uh, have to, uh, go on, uh, at that point? And, you know, at, at this point in time, um, there are, you know, that they're talking about, okay, once these restrictions are relaxed and, um, the state starts to open up again, will that be done on a statewide level or will it be done on a regional level? Because what they're finding right now is that, um, here in Western Mass, it does seem like we've plateaued and pretty much stabilized. They're still looking for a decline in, uh, the positives, uh, over a two-week period, but it looks like we have plateaued. Uh, but that is different than what they're seeing right now in either Central Mass or obviously down east and, you know, the Boston, uh, neighborhood. So, uh, that's on, uh, the tables. And that was the big news out of Boston, uh, from today and, um, on, uh, local level, I'll go over, uh, the summary that I did send out, after, uh, yesterday's teleconference, uh, call that we had with the Board of Health, uh, Rini from the Select Board, the Emergency Management Director, uh, the Police Chief and, uh, the Fire Chief. And, uh, our Emergency Management Director, Charlie- And our Emergency Management Director Charlie reported that there is currently a total of 24 positive cases for Southampton on the state list. As we know, we have had, regrettably, as Rini mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we have had three deaths of residents that were COVID-19 related. Some of the PPE, just actually most of the PPE is becoming more readily available for our first responders so that they can get out and do their job in Southampton and respond, whether it's via ambulance, fire or police. On last Friday, Charlie placed another order of PPE supplies with MEMA and he was able to pick them up in Agwam at the MEMA Regional Office the next day on Saturday morning. So supplies were able to be picked up within 24 hours of actually ordering. In addition to that, the National Guard dropped off N95 masks in Southampton Monday morning. Charlie would like the group to start thinking about what types of supplies we will need in the future when the town is allowed to open back up, either on less restrictions or totally.
Can I say something regarding that?
Sure.
I mean, I think the obvious, I think the obvious ones we have covered. I think the less obvious ones, which I actually personally have problems getting, which, you know, maybe we're not doing right now because nobody's in these buildings, but we're gonna need like just general use wipes, like disinfecting spray. I mean, you, I don't really shop anywhere else other than Big Y, but you can't, you cannot get a disinfecting wipe or a bottle of disinfecting spray at Big Y. It's like, it's literally impossible. That, you know, paper towels, like not necessarily personal protective equipment, which I know we're all heavily focused on, but people are gonna be wanting to wipe down their desks, wanting to wipe down surfaces. They're gonna need all of these sprays, which are just really hard to come by right now. So that, I mean, just generally speaking, if we are gonna talk about this and think about it, I think that I'm having a hard time getting that stuff at my place. So I, if we're not thinking about it now, the minute we open up and somebody's looking for a bottle of 409 disinfectant, we don't have it.
And actually, we've had some luck with that and we've had even better luck with buying raw materials like alcohol and then splitting them out and using them in spray bottles and making stuff that we have had with the, the spray wipes. Actually, the probably biggest, and gowns are in wicked short supply, but our fire department is in, right now is in a good shape with those. But one of the hardest things I have found to find and order at this point in time are actually the nitrile gloves.
Yeah.
You know, so.
I mean, every time somebody from the public walks in, the person that's serving that person is going to want to clean and disinfect everything that that person's touched. So and they're gonna need, they're gonna, you know, everything, just, you know, from the actual liquid, then being able to mix it, then the application process and whatever we're gonna use to apply it, whether it's a paper towel or reusable wipe or something. I mean, we just have to think of like every little piece of that equation, because every piece of that equation is just in little, is in very low supply.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct.
And we're gonna be, and we're gonna be churning through it, you know? I mean, if you, if you use nitrile gloves correctly, you're supposed to, everything you touch, you're supposed to replace your gloves. So like, I mean, I see people like, people don't use nitrile gloves correctly. Rini, you can probably speak to this better than I do, but like, you know, people going in grocery stores wearing nitrile gloves on their, on their, touching their grocery cart and then reaching and grabbing produce and then touching their grocery. Like, that's not the proper way of using a nitrile glove. And so if people do know how to use them, you're gonna be going through them like crazy. You know, you're supposed to use them to touch like one thing and then replace them.
Right, that's where you're supposed to go in and take, and the disinfectant wipes you took with you, you disinfect your cart with.
Yeah.
If you're lucky enough to find them.
Exactly.
That's a really good point. I think their focus has been on PPE and I think it would be good either if you or I had asked Charlie about, you know, increasing our supply for schools, town hall, like all of our public buildings.
Every building, like school, highway, police, fire, town hall. Like, everybody's gonna need a pretty large supply of all of that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, library.
Yep, yeah, any, any public, any public building. I mean, and then they're gonna have to, you know, they're gonna have to have a starting mass of supply, because if they're gonna want to do something after somebody touches something, I mean, especially the library, Chris. I mean, people walking up and down and touching the books and everything else. I mean, they're gonna have to have an initial stock of high supply of all of the items and then they're gonna have to set a par level that's relatively reasonable so that they don't ever run out.
Yep. I'm happy to send a note over to Charlie, have him address that on next week when he, when we meet again, okay?
Yeah, but, and don't forget what the supplies we got from MEMA, MEMA are supposed to be for the frontline first responders and not necessarily for the internal use of the building.
And that's, and that's with regard to like masks, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, presumably we're gonna need those for frontline workers that have to deal with the public. Library, you know, police and fire will obviously be covered, but you know, what about town hall and library specifically? I mean, not many people I don't think are going into the highway department, but school too?
Well, yeah, schools, especially when they start back up in September.
Yeah, yeah.
Good point, Matt.
Hey, can I ask a question here? We're talking about the COVID and Charlie and all that stuff. Is he able, I mean, Charlie obviously is putting in a lot of hours as the EMD and there's no salary for him and the budget. Is he able to put in as an expense to MEMA for possible reimbursement, some hourly wage for him?
I don't know if we can or not. I'll check on it.
Yeah, I, next year, I'm pretty sure in the fiscal 21 budget, we have a salary line for the EMD. We should talk about that because Charlie's term, I think, ends in May. And whoever takes over that position, if this virus is going into the fall and we have a recurrence, we need somebody in there that's gonna be right on top of us. And I think we've been fortunate so far with Charlie, but we don't want to take a chance that we have nobody in that position come fall.
I don't think that the position is an hourly. I think that it's currently not paid and as far as wages, I think it was appealed by Charlie for it to be a stipend position.
Right, and I don't have an issue with a stipend position, but I think we need to plan ahead for the budget for 21. Now you know if we could get any reimbursables through the MEMA grant coming up.
Yeah, I don't know if we can get any reimbursables for like volunteer like that, but I'll find out.
Yeah, we, yeah, I don't think we need an hourly, you're right.
But even, even the, the Charlie, Charlie had talked about, didn't that end up going to PQB to take a look at? And I don't know that we heard from them, did we, or did we approve a stipend or not?
There's nothing in the budget. They didn't approve one.
No, not so far. And there was some question, I remember at the time, whether or not do we need to really go to PQB for a stipend position?
Just a budget line item, I think.
Right, yeah.
I do remember that the DPH funds really were very specific. It did include nursing, if there was case tracing involved by nursing. I don't know whether or not, I know we're incurring expenses from being part of the district with Salt Hadley there. I don't know how that's being reconciled from a budgetary standpoint, but it may include in that DPH fund some money towards emergency management. Do you know, Ed?
No, I don't, to be honest with you. I'd have to go back and look at that.
Okay. But good point, John. I think he definitely has been putting in a lot of time and energy.
Yeah, that's for sure.
What else on the meeting?
Uh, let's see, Jerry Swanson reported on the second and third deaths of the Southampton residents. Jerry actually did know the individual who was passed away with the third death and it hit home very hard for.
I'll say the same thing, actually. He was my next door neighbor and his daughter used to babysit our kids. So it was very, very sad to hear about that for any of them, but it definitely hit home for me too.
Same with, same with me. He's the only one that I, that I knew and he's related to a former Select Board member too.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. And then Jerry being clairvoyant on Monday said that she thinks the governor's May fourth order date will be extended due to the number of COVID-19 positive cases, which is still occurring. The governor had said that it would take 14 days of declining numbers to get to a point he would be willing to start opening the state up gradually. The Board of Health has developed new rules for Title V and perk test witnessing for social distancing and the requirement for everyone there to be wearing masks also. These rules will have to be abided by in order for the test to proceed. Let's see, John Wortman reported that currently there are no gowns available in the Commonwealth for first responders, but he says that the Fire Department EMS is currently in good supply of the gowns at this point. Fire Department received 50 of the N95 masks, which are dropped off by the National Guard. John reports the current burn rate use of these masks by his department is about 20 per week. Is still waiting for delivery of additional N95 masks, which were ordered through the Police Chiefs Association. And the number of regular ambulance transports is down slightly. The number of COVID-19 ambulance calls is also down. They have been using a fodder unit to sanitize the ambulance when needed and he also has offered its use to the both Police Department and the Highway Department if it is needed. The fire and EMS staff is healthy and things are going as well as can be expected at this point. Rini asked if the EMS was getting direction from the hospitals and where transports were to be taken due to capacity issues. John responded that they were currently following regular protocols on which hospital, hospital patient was to be taken to, as currently there are not any capacity issues, which would require the regular protocol procedure to be altered. Rini and Charlie talked about the direction and rules which would need to be established for reopening the town. There will be certain rules and directives which will be given on the federal level, on the state level and then the local level, such as by the Board of Health, establishing rules and regulations that will need to be followed. Ian reported that the District Attorney's Office has asked that any penalties for non-compliance of COVID-19 orders be dealt with either by a letter of non-compliance or if further action is necessary via civil fines or penalties rather than through criminal charges. Ian reported that the police and dispatch staff are healthy. He has lost a full-time police officer to being called up for deployment by the National Guard for a month, however. And Jerry also reported that the fabric shop in town is asked to be open to be able to sell fabric to make masks. The fabric shop will be open on Thursdays for this purpose. So far, they have been able to make 1,000 masks for the COVID-19 response.
I think, yeah, Ian, police also unfortunately mentioned an uptick in domestic calls.
Said that wasn't unique to here in Southampton, that, that has been seen pretty much across, across the state.
Where do we stand with some of the testing for our first responders? Did we get a fair number tested or is that not being as emphasized as it was or?
Well, if, if they have someone that's showing symptoms, they are, they are able to send them over to West Springfield to be tested. And the other thing that they, both Fire and the police have instituted as standing operating procedure is using a thermometer when individuals report for the shift to see if they have a fever.
Oh, Ed, tell me if I'm wrong, speaking of thermometer, I understand that, I guess it's through MEMA, Charlie was able to get 10 handheld thermometer units and he passed them out to police and fire and Board of Health. So that's a good tool.
Absolutely.
Although I will say that one of the things that they're saying is that the drop in the PO2 is almost as strong of a measure as the temperature.
Yeah, I guess there's a run on the O2 oximeters online if you try to get one.
Yeah, the same thing with thermometers too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's for sure.
So any questions about the governor's extension or the COVID update? I think we've been fortunate. It sounds like there's a lot of good cooperation between police, fire, emergency management and Board of Health and the fact that there's been a pretty strong workforce other than one police officer because of the guard. I think that we've been in pretty good shape, thank goodness.
Absolutely, knock on wood.
Yep.
What's, what's everybody's overall assessment of, of the kinds of precautions just ordinary citizens are taking? We, are you seeing, you know, pretty much compliance with wearing, not that we're required to wear masks, but are more people wearing masks? Gloves, social distancing? Any observations out there that anybody can comment on?
So I haven't seen any gloves, but I've seen most people wearing masks. Once in a while we go out for takeout, go to the paisanos, they have the lines down six feet apart, have a mask, you know? So stuff like that, I think people are, are doing. Although I go to the Big Y sometimes, only when I have to it. And you still see, saw a mother and bringing her daughter in there and neither of them had a mask on. It's like, boy, you know? I don't, I don't think some people really believe you can catch it that way, but I, I, I think most people are wearing a mask. Even when you go through the drive-throughs now, I think people have masks inside as well as outside. What I, I do get a kick out of is see somebody driving down the street alone with a mask on. That's, that's big real pressure.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was getting gas the other day at Cumbee's and I was, I was actually amazed at the number of people going in and out of there without masks.
Really?
I was surprised, actually. Definitely didn't make me go inside to do anything.
No, no.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so moving on, if there's nothing more on COVID, we talked about the building commissioner job posting. Are we all good with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, Town Caucus postponement, right now it's May 12th.
Correct, which now we've extended past that. So as, as far as the stay-at-home and non-essential business orders. So there are a couple actions that can be taken. They, right now, they are, would be done by Special Act of the Legislature, which the Select Board can request. And there, I talked with Lucy Dalton, our town clerk, about them. One is the town could just request to do away with the town caucus altogether. But there's another option that I kind of like and Lucy seemed to like it also is can, or the other option is to try to still have a town caucus and ask for a special act to reduce the time required in between caucus and the annual election. But there is another option the town could do without the town caucus, could request through a special act that the deadline for nomination papers be extended. Lucy looked at her calendar and if the, we were able to still have the town election on, I believe it's June 23rd, she would recommend extending the nomination paper extension to May 20th to have a deadline for them to turn in to be able to actually have the signatures counted and to get the ballots printed for that annual election. The other thing that goes along with that is via special act could also, to make it more feasible, can also request through the special act that the number of required signatures on a nomination paper be reduced from what we currently, the town currently requires by, by bylaw to a lower amount. And Lucy and I talked about it and we both thought that to go down that road, we might recommend, if this was the option the Select Board wanted to take, to reduce that number to 10 required signatures.
And those documents were already due, is that correct?
They're originally due March 31st, correct? But by special act, we can. But by special act, we can extend that originally.
Could you get an extension and a reduction in the number of signatures?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, my recommendation and Lucy's from talking to her today would be to not do a town caucus, to extend the deadline for submitting nomination papers to the May 20th and to also request that the required number of signatures be dropped to 10. And obviously, if we do that, I've talked to KP Law about this. They can write the required special act for us. We can submit that to Representative Zabadoza, who will submit it for us to the House and it'll go to the Senate. But obviously, if we do that, we're also, we're gonna have to get the message out on the town website. I will do a code red for the town clerk, which Lucy will write up for me to get that message out there. And I'll also contact the Daily Hampshire Gazette to get that message out.
Do we have a sense of how many that took out papers did not return them by the March 31st deadline? How many people are we talking about?
I don't know. But you also got people that may not have even been or thought about doing nomination papers and thought of qualifying through the town caucus that now would be able to take out nomination papers, get 10 signatures and return them and qualify to be on the ballot.
Well, Lucy would have a list of people who pulled papers, so she would know how many have not returned it, wouldn't she?
I would think she would, yes. I don't think there was very many.
I think the point that Ed was just making is that all of this, you know, started in early March. So there may have been people that didn't even go to the town hall to fill papers and may have decided they would just wait till a caucus because at that point, the social distancing was already implemented.
Correct.
Well, it sounds like an idea to both extend the timing, but also to reduce the number of signatures, yeah.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And my suggested motion, if I may, would be not to hold the town caucus, to extend the deadline for nomination papers to May 20th and to also reduce the required number of signatures on those nomination papers to 10.
So move.
Can I just ask, oh, we need a second.
I'll second.
Who seconded?
Chris.
Okay.
Right now, you said the governor's date was the 19th?
May 18th, so we'd open up on the 19th. And we are talking about caucuses and elections, so my next guess is that I think we're also going to see that special state election for the senator's seat also changed and extended outwards.
So, a question, Ed. If this is gonna take special legislation and we're set to open right now, May 18th, if we don't open until after that, do we have to go back and get new legislation to change these dates once again?
No, because right now, what you're voting to do is to not have a town caucus to extend the deadline for the
Submission of
nomination papers, reduce that signature number to 10. And my own personal feeling is, okay, social distancing, probably 10 is doable if you call up your neighbors and, you know, go leave your nomination paper, you know, under a brick at the end of their driveway, sign it, take it back, type of thing.
I guess I'm only thinking, are they able to get the paperwork and bring it back, not the process in between?
Yeah, they would still be able to, Lucy would make arrangements for them to get the paperwork, whether, you know, put it outside for them to, you know, pick up when they got into the driveway, whether she mailed it to them, what have you. And the same type of arrangements can be done to get them back.
Okay. I don't want to make it too complicated for the people.
No, and that's what we talked about, is how can we make this, how can we make this relatively simple and doable and have people that want to run for elected office that are interested in it qualify.
Wondering if we can also, I mean, there's a lot of seats open. I mean, we've been working really, well, we've been trying to get finance committee people and so are there ways, I don't want to put any barriers up and I want to get the word out too about seats available, so.
Yeah.
Are there other things we can do? Or Lucy can do, or you can do in terms of public noticing?
I mean, could we do this entire signature process through email? I mean, we do need people on finance committee, like, I do feel like getting, I mean, John and Rini, like, you'll get your 10 signatures, no big deal. But if there are people that are interested in FinCom and want to run, I mean, the 10 signature thing, especially with handing pens and pencils and you got to get close to hand on the document unless you're gonna throw it in a paper airplane form across.
Can I just put something out there? We've done some nomination papers here at our house recently and it's, we leave everything outside. All the papers, we ask people to wear gloves, wear a mask and bring your own pen. So the paper is outside in the air all the whole time. We leave it after the course of the day. People come and go and we're able to get signatures.
So you have it out at your house and they come to your house? They come to your house to sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, I mean, other locations, people can volunteer, like, the easier. But I mean, it is doable and the most, you know, I think the most impressive thing is that people follow those directions because everyone's concerned about being safe. And so we were able to get it done. And no one, you know, had no liability to individuals, as far as we know.
I'm just wondering if it could be managed electronically, though? Is that even a possibility or not?
Not that I'm aware of, man.
I don't think we have DocuSign or anything, Matt.
Well, I wouldn't, I was even gonna go a little looser than that, just a simple email from an individual to the town clerk saying, "I support this member for," or "I nominate this member for FinCom" or whatever it is.
Yeah, no, but those haven't been accepted yet via legislature or the actions department of the state.
We're asking for a special act of legislature, why not ask them?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Matt.
Yeah, I commend you, Francine, for doing what you did, but, I mean, most people need to like stand outside the grocery store to get these things signed.
I understand. But you let, you get the word out and that's how you get it done. But I do like your idea, and so while we're asking, why not ask? I think emails, not signatures, but certainly verify. And I think in some instances are considered legal.
I also think it's the registrar group that approves the signatures anyway, based on, you know, how do they know, based on someone signing, how is that any different from verifying an email?
Yeah.
I think it's worth asking. We gotta move into new territory when it comes to voting.
We do.
When it comes to meetings or anything like this, I think, yeah.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion in the second. Any other discussion about the proposed May 20th deadline for signatures, number 10 signatures? And then the 23rd is the election? Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor then?
Mark and I.
Okay, that's everybody. And as of right now, the other two dates are still, town election is the 23rd and town meeting is the 9th.
Yeah, we'll see what happens in, over the course of the next couple of weeks with, if those are still possible or they're gonna be threatened. I kind of have an idea of the way things are still going that they may still be threatened, but we'll see.
Okay, the last item on the new business is the audit. It's the final FY 2019 audit financial statements and management letter. And we also got an email from our town accountant. Everybody get a chance to read the documents?
Yep.
Any questions or comments about them?
It seemed like there was a lot of missed entries or entries that weren't done in the right line item and stuff like that. And I don't know if it was, it looks like between the treasurer, the assessor and the auditor were attributed to. So I just hope that we're following up to take care of these issues so they don't reappear during the next audit cycle. Because those seem to be just journal entries that aren't being looked at as carefully as maybe they should be. Am I understanding that right, Ed, from what I read?
I don't know if you'd say weren't looked at as carefully as they should be. It just may have been a, you know, an oversight or whatever, but we know about them now, so I know that they are going to get looked at more frugally.
And honestly, I attribute some of it to the fact that there's such a lag in the posting that by the time things are submitted, they kind of fall off. You know what I'm saying? If it's two months before revenue is posted, when the accountant is doing her reports or pulling these figures together, you can see how things might kind of get shifted. I saw there was like, there was like a timing issue from what it was that I read. Now, that was my understanding with what I read.
I would just say that everyone has to work together closely as a team and at certain times a year. And for some accounts or funds, probably more often than others, that they need to be reconciled. You know, whether it's assessor and accountant, whether it's treasurer and accountant, just to make sure that everything is corresponding and that the records aren't off.
From my experience with these management reports, there was nothing critical or that bad in there. It's just items that we just need to pay a little more attention to going forward. And it sounds like you've already talked to the folks involved, Ed.
Yeah, that, I mean, there's nothing, you know, outrageous here by any means. And, you know, I've been involved in, you know, three different entities for these type of audits. I have seen a lot more comments in some places. I've seen a lot more serious comments and, you know, in some places. So, I mean, this is what their jobs are to make us, you know, function better. You know, so I think we got a good crew here. I mean, everyone works very hard. Sometimes there isn't enough hours in the day or whatever, but I have a good deal of faith in everyone.
I think my two questions revolved around why the end-of-year balances didn't get done for the enterprise funds in particular. That kind of surprised me, that we would have been able to close out the books and not have that reconciled. And then the issue around the capital water projects that had been approved in 2018 that hadn't had a general ledger entry made for them kind of, you know, it goes to two of my questions tonight, one of which was a question on the expense report about the water pump situation and the water projects that are overspent now. And I wonder if that's tied to that. And then my question about the future bonding then for the CPA account, that we need to be sure that we don't lose track of that so that we do, you know, there's such a lag between when these things are approved at town meeting, for example, and when the bonding actually occurs, that somewhere we've got to be able to get ourselves a tickler system or something to be sure that we don't lose sight of those, you know, on our books, basically, so.
Like I say, with the water funding, we knew when the bids came in that what was there in the capital funds was not enough. And the accountant sat down with the water commissioners and they took a look at what they had for in their accounts, what had been authorized for, you know, borrowing for some of these things. And they came up with a methodology to cover those costs. In this particular case, it's just, it will need to get transferred into another bucket later on.
Well, I'm happy to see that it wasn't sort of mismanagement of funds. And like Vicki said, it was a matter of buckets, which I appreciate, but I still think it's something worth learning from. And I think for me, the bigger issue has to do with the prior year issues when we have something come up more than once. I guess that's the part that kind of bothers me and I would hope that we could develop some risk assessment and some procedures relative to our IT and security, you know, when it comes to some of the issues that they raised about risk assessment process.
Yeah, I've asked Tanya to send me some samples of templates to work on that, and she's agreed to do it from Melantin Heath.
Okay.
Maureen?
Yep.
I don't know if it's a good time to segue on IT. I've got something to bring up on the IT issue. You want me to save that for a new business? I can't wait.
No, that's okay, because actually that's the next agenda item anyway. So unless anybody else has any specific questions to this audit, I think it's fine.
Can I just, can I just ask, does this firm ever come and make a presentation of their report? I mean, just to explain it to the public? I don't mean the nuts and bolts of it, but an overall explanation of this process and their findings for the town? Is it worth it or not to anyone? And again, coming back to keeping the public informed.
Well, and how often have we used, is this the same audit company we use all the time?
Yeah.
Yeah, this was the one we had a multi-year contract, remember? We talked about it about a year or so ago, yeah.
Yep.
And this is a firm I'm familiar with from somewhere else and it's a good firm.
I certainly think that it's good information. I just, I don't, I think that their report is brief. I mean, I think this, I would have preferred all the positive things. I mean, I think it's very deep, you know, identifying, you know, sort of gaps or redundancies. I think that, I don't know, I'm comfortable with Vicki and Ed's sort of explanation. But I'm open to having a presentation too. It just feels like it was, it's just limited to me.
As a manager, I'm glad it's limited because when it's not limited, that's not a good thing.
I think you hit the nail on the head, Rini, when you said the repetitive items would be the ones that we have issues with, because there's always gonna be errors or oversights. As long as they're corrected and there's no, you know, funds that are disappearing, which obviously there's not. I think it's just part of the routine management letter.
What do other people think? Chris or Matt, anything?
No, I mean, I don't find anything serious there. I mean, I think there are, you know, I think there are errors that anybody can make at any given time. And I just hope that we can put in some kind of systems that they can be found earlier and corrected earlier so that we just have more timeliness, I guess, in that is my thought, you know.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, then John, you want to bring up the other IT issue?
Yeah, I was, I was talking to our health director today and the topic came up of the email and the way the system. Has a lot of glitches and downtime and is emails not always in a timely manner? And she told me about the PVPC that they have a contract. And I got a call into the, the person there, Molly Goran Watts, to find out more about it because Geraldine just knew some on the periphery. But my understanding is for a $400 fee, they have, PVPC has a contract with a vendor out of East Hartford. That will come in and do a full evaluation of our IT systems from top to bottom and give all the recommendations. And security is one of them. If there's new software, one of, I'd be interested in hearing is, should we have our server, a virtual server? And should, with this COVID issue, should the Board of Health have a separation for HIPAA and all that? But anyways, it's a $400 fee, I'm getting more information. I'll bring it back to you folks, but this seems like it may be money well spent to do a complete evaluation of our IT system. Because we hear about it going down, you know, through the course of the year many times.
Well, I mean, maybe Ed, you can speak to that, but we are in the process of getting a new server, correct?
Yeah, I know what, it will be virtualized. I mean, if you want a total assessment of the system, I can probably get you one for free. If you want to take care of the email issues. We can get, we'd have to put in our own email server and it's about $10,000. So, I mean, until we can do that, we're somewhat at the mercy of the vendor that we have. Which is Bluehost, but the actual licensing, our new server that will be put in would actually handle that. The licensing fee isn't much, it's probably less than $1,000. Where it starts adding up, it's, it's $85 per email address.
So what, what software are we running and all that? And what levels are we running? I mean, do we have a good analysis of that? Because I mean, our emails alone, there's glitches in even getting them out to us on a, a regular basis. So the company that you said you can get a free evaluation from, is that the same vendor that we're currently using now?
Well, not for that particular purpose. It's the vendor that is, we're getting the new server from.
I mean, have we ever had a full evaluation of our complete system or are we just doing components? When we need to?
I had a cursory walkthrough early on from this vendor that we are currently dealing with. And there are some issues in our, our systems. There's no doubt about that. A lot of that will get cleared up with the installation of the new server, but the email issues are totally separate.
But has anybody sat down and give us a, a good evaluation and a listing of here's where we are, here's where we should migrate to, here's some of the issues? A third party, nothing, not somebody who's going to sell us something?
Well, I mean, they're all selling something at some point in time, so.
But a consultant doesn't necessarily sell the product, it just comes in and gives you an evaluation. I, I guess this might be, again, I need more details about the vendor, but a full evaluation under a contract with PVPC for $400. May tell us a lot of information because I don't, since I've been here, we've never had any kind of full study. We've kind of piecemealed everything together. It seems like something breaks down with, you know, we've got to go here, we've got to go there. We're using these small companies. You know, to, to manage it. So that's my two cents.
Didn't we get a compact grant at one point to do an analysis of the IT? Capabilities and recommendations at some point?
Not that I'm aware of. We did get the compact grant to do the. Upgrade of the backup system and the. Wi-Fi system here in Town Hall.
Okay.
But maybe you got something earlier than when I came here.
I don't remember ever getting it. I remember the compact grant, but you know, we're like an $18 million business and our, our back office systems to me are pretty basic, you know? Of course, I come from, I'm worried for, hey, yeah.
What was the grant that you got most recently, Ed, that you had? I think you had put in for a couple of different options and they only funded one of them. That was.
Yeah, they ended, we had put in for, I think it was almost $39,000. And they ended up actually funding two components of that. One was the backup sys, system upgrade and the other was the Sonic Wall. For the Wi-Fi system here at Town Hall.
And right now, the server is, what's the timetable on that?
Server is ready. We need a return to normalcy to actually have it installed because once they install it, they have to go around to each desktop or laptop. And actually do a physical connection and make sure everything's working correctly.
Any other recommendations from anybody relative to this in terms of a overall assessment or? Anything?
Yeah, I mean, since I've got that call into her, I'm just going to hear what she has to say. I'll pass along to the rest of the board members and you make up your mind once you see what they offer.
Okay. Okay, is there any other business that anybody would like to talk about? I would just, I would just, go ahead, someone will have.
I was just going to ask, and something we kind of talked about before is, we, I believe, Ed, if I'm not mistaken, Ed. By July 1, the fire chief and the accountants contracts will expire?
Yes, that's my understanding, yeah.
So we've got two months. Is that something we can work on so that we have place?
Yeah, I just started to pull up, pull those out and work on them. So that will get them going the next week or two.
Okay.
And I haven't seen any others that expire this year, but I will double check.
Okay. So you can send out a copy of the existing one to us for review and then we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, just to get it going earlier on?
Sure.
The other thing is I did get a letter and forwarded along to Ed that there has been a request from a resident to make a new. Another street in town is a scenic road, High Street. So that letter has been forwarded to Ed and he'll get it out to everybody and that'll be on the agenda for the next meeting. And then I'd like at some point, doesn't have to be next meeting, but you know, we talked about signatures on. Phenomenations and so forth, but I would just like to have a conversation about the, the registrar. One of the committee members had voiced some concerns about the makeup and the process relative to the registrar. And I'm just wondering if we could have a discussion about that in the future, okay?
Sure.
Good. Any other recommendations for the agenda? Okay, so.
Just kind of curious, sorry.
Go ahead, Matt.
What, what is the designation of a scenic road due?
Oh, actually, there's quite a few things about it. It's, um. Well, if I could bring up the letter, I could tell you, but basically, help me out, Ed. You cannot, you can't take down any trees once the road is designated as a scenic road. So the tree warden has to sort of chime in on it. It actually, what would happen is the letter of the recommendation would come to us, we would vote to send it to planning board. And then planning board and the tree warden would sign off on it. And is it the planning board that has the jurisdiction over it, the designation, Ed, or we do?
My understanding is it's the planning board.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and, and there are certain things even other than trees that can be done on scenic byways as, you know, as far as. Businesses develop. Items like that.
Does there restrict building or anything like that?
No, I don't remember it.
Yeah, it, it can in some, in some instances.
I think in the current master plan, there's two or three or four roads that have already been designated scenic roads in town. Glendale Road comes to mind, Pleasant Street comes to mind, but there's no signage there that indicates that. But it's, was in our master plan since 2013. That was approved by town, but we've never done any formal notification of it, I think.
Actually, there are quite a few scenic roads in town. I was just trying to bring up the letter.
Pretty sure that my road's a scenic road, I just have no idea what it means.
Mountain Road is and Pleasant Street and.
But I don't know what it, I don't know what it means or does. I mean, it's great designation, it's just, I just don't know what the difference is.
Yeah, it can't be a, it can't be like a state highway or anything. It has to be more of a local road. So anyway, you'll get actually the email and also the, the write-up that says what has to be in place for it to be designated as a scenic road. I just wanted to give you a heads up about that, that the letter will be coming to you. And in it, it also talked about the. The requirements. So the, any, what's a signature on?
Yeah, that under any other necessary business, first of all, in your packet, you should see a PCF, which. Is actually the hard copies now sitting in the select board mailbox in the break room. But it's a sign off for Tom Quillen's accrued vacation time. So that has to be approved by the select board. So if you would kindly approve that and then sometime Maureen, maybe you can drop in and sign that.
Sure. I mean, if he's accrued it and it's, you know, I mean, we have to sign off on it? That's not something that's automatic that he gets what he accrued?
No, unfortunately not. It's another one of those PCF processes.
Okay.
How many, how many hours is it? I didn't see that in my packet, I'm sorry.
$729 and I forget the amount of hours.
It was 21.75 hours.
Thank you.
Twenty-one three quarters.
Yep.
The other signature is the Police Department, Ian Illingsworth, Police Chief, contractual increase.
Correct, and the contract that the select board entered into. With Chief Illingsworth. And May 5th, he is, becomes eligible for a 2% increase.
Effective what date?
May 5th, I think, let's say, should have it on here. I know somewhere, yeah, effective date, May 5th.
And if that's in their budget, it's part of the contract that still has to be signed off by us?
Yes.
Well, this reads that they'll need a transfer of $277 and looks, I can't read it. Okay.
Through the end of the year.
So the money's there.
Oh, well.
Essentially, essentially.
Essentially, it's going to get transferred from police department wages.
Anything else on any of that?
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, for both of them, yeah, I mean, you can combine the two of them, but just like any regular PCF.
I'll make a motion on both of those, we approve.
No second.
Okay, so that is for the police and also?
For Tom Quillen's accrued vacation time, say no.
Okay, all on paper?
Tishman, I.
All's I.
Rowland, I.
Martin, I.
Rowden, I. Next is there are no licenses and permits, the warrant.
Okay, you have warrant, payroll warrant 20-42 for $331,895.31. And then a vendor warrant, W20-43 for $489,722.25. So let me, let me just say here that we're doing the signatures remotely. I don't see backup for payroll or payroll deductions because that's all part of the system that's already in place. So I don't look back at, at that detail. As far as the vendor payable warrant, I get a listing like you all see. At this time, ordinarily, I would get the, I would go in, I would look at, I would see the listing and I would be, have access to all the supporting documentation. That drove all of those payments. So, um, I've worked, you know. Talked with, exchanged email with people involved in processing these warrants. There are a couple of them here. And. For, for those pay, payroll, the vendor payables. We've agreed that I will call and discuss any questions that I have since I don't have physical access to review any documents. Until, until the building opens again.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Francine. Any questions about the warrants?
No.
Okay, oh, select board meetings, May 14th, May 26th. But we also just agreed to have a quick meeting on.
7th.
May 7th.
Do you want to keep the 14th?
Or do you want to move it back to the 12th now?
Yeah, really.
This is no caucus?
If we keep it on the 12th, then just keep on our regular schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is everybody okay with that?
Sure, that's fine.
So, so it's the 7th, the 12th and the 26th.
Correct. Next is open time for the public. Like I said, the only communication I got was relative to the scenic road. There's been some communication relative to accumulating cloth mask. And that all got worked out. Is there anything else, Ed, that you're aware of?
No, that I, that I'm aware of.
I just had that one letter that I had drafted for that inquiry on the, the abandoned road area on that property near the Thai Carmody. So Ed has that draft.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that, Chris.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, we, any other business? There's no executive session, so does anybody else have anything else?
No, I think get out and enjoy a little bit of nature when you can and hike some trails and just be mindful of our signage that does exist, such as at Alderpan. For those that want to go back up to that area, there's big signs there that talk about it being private property. So just respect the fact that we can use the trails, but don't get carried away.
Okay.
And just, if you want to get out, Sheldon's reopened on a limited basis. And the Chinese restaurant at the Red Rock, I see it's opening up too.
Yep.
Is it just for takeout?
Yes.
Takeout, yeah, yeah. Got to support our locals.
Great. I also, Ed, did you, um, there was a letter that just came in about the Labree land. Should we just, I don't know if that's an official public comment or question, but I got a email that I think Randall addressed.
Oh, you mean the Labree field?
Yeah.
Yes, someone had sent an email to Marla because they felt one of their neighbors was. Draining the retention or detention. Swale or pond. At Labree Field. And what happens is that was designed for drainage to go into and normally it would flow out of it. However, late every fall, the highway department actually uses sandbags and plugs the. The drain tube up so that the, that detention basin can fill up with water. And if it freezes. Youngsters and people can skate on it. So, and, and vice versa, in the springtime, the highway department will take those sandbags out so it will drain again. So Randall did respond to the individual that had written the email that, that it was not designed to hold water all the time.
That's pretty creative, though.
Yeah. Anything else? Then a, a motion to adjourn then?
I moved to adjourn.
Okay.
Ed, did you get that? I think it was Francine and John. All right.
I actually did get that one.
Okay. Roll, call, vote then?
All's eye.
Tish, man, I.
Roll and die.
Mark and I.
Groden, I. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
Be safe.
Everybody, bye-bye.
All right.